Hi. Good morning, Ryan.
Morning, Estelle. How are you?
I'm ready to go. Are we ready to go?
I have all the supervisors and I'm.
Well, we still have another, we're just about nine o'clock now.
Yes, we are good to go.
Great, wonderful. Thank you very much.
And welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, June 9, 2020, meeting of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. In accordance with the executive order N29-20, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors is meeting virtually until further notice. I'd like to begin the meeting by asking you to join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll go to C O. Nielsen, are there any modifications to the agenda? Amy.
Good morning, Chair. There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
Thank you very much. And as I've done in the, for the last, well, one other meeting, we're going to go right ahead with the COVID update. And at that point, we'll go to the consent calendar and go forward with the rest of the meeting. As we've been doing this for quite some time now, and I'd like to welcome Dr. Frankovich, Sheriff Hansel, and Director Stevens to give us an update on the COVID emergency and where we are at that point, this point. Dr. Frankovich.
Good morning. So just an update here. Again, we are seeing over 7 million cases globally, and globally, COVID cases are increasing. It's the trend right now with over 400,000 deaths. In the U.S., over 2 million cases and over 100,000 deaths. And California, 130,000 cases and 4,600 deaths approximately. In Humboldt, we are at 105 cases and four deaths. I am happy to announce that with our facility outbreak with Alder Bay, that we had, we tested in the facility at 14 days out from the last possible exposure. And I have been monitoring staff as well as the patients. And we have no additional cases at this time. So we're not, at this point, we are not continuing to follow them in outbreak mode, although we continue to work with them as we are with the other assisted living and skilled nursing facilities throughout the county. So that was certainly progress, and they were very happy to have that news there. When we look, one thing I had emailed Ryan a slide. One of the questions that I get asked a lot is, are we sort of done with COVID? And, you know, are we, have we sort of seen what we're going to see, and it's over? And I wanted to point out to people that, again, globally, we're seeing increasing cases. In many parts of this country, we are. And this is just taken from the Johns Hopkins site and is our California cases. And so this, what this is, is a five-day moving average of new cases. The last date on it is June 5th. That's the most updated data there. But I just want to point out to people that we are seeing continued increase in COVID cases in the state of California. And so, again, as we are in some other places in the, in the country. Locally, thanks, Ryan. Locally, we have had, you know, what I would describe as some, some smaller waves of cases. We have come very close to hitting the state cutoff point for applying for variants, even under the relaxed guidelines. And then we've sort of, again, had this sort of wave action where we have a cluster of cases with lots of contacts. We are isolating and quarantining, and then we see a decrease as those people come off isolation quarantine. In terms of our epidemiologic data, we're looking pretty good right now. And our doubling time for cases is about 74 days. We had gotten much lower than that when we were, had increased activity. Our positivity raised about 1.5%. And the one thing I would mention is that we, in the last week or so especially, we have not been testing as many people as I'd like to. Testing is a really important piece of our surveillance. And so, again, I want to encourage people to do some ongoing testing. We are working with our congregate living facilities to get people in and routinely tested. And the general public, it would be really helpful to do that as well. So we have more information. We are going to be able to take our mobile testing or our Redwood Acres site. And one to two days a week, we're going to be able to do some off-site testing. And that will be really helpful to reduce some barriers, to be able to do testing in some parts of the county that have a bigger distance to travel to get tested up here. And also to help in some congregate facilities where getting staff over to be tested is a bit of a burden. So we are, we just got approval to do that. And so we're doing the final planning on making that happen. In addition, Trinity County has a Verily, which is sort of an Optum equivalent, mobile site, and they are going to be doing some testing in the Willow Creek area once a week, and they're going to be doing that at least over the next few weeks. And so that will improve some access there as well. So testing is a really important piece of response as we move forward. And we have to have robust testing to know where we are in this, and we need it to be representative as much as possible of our county. So we've been really pushing that, as well as our, building our contact tracing and investigation teams internally. From a statewide standpoint, but then impact us locally, as we all probably recall, we were granted a variance to move into stage two on the recovery plan. And that was on May 14th. We opened retail businesses on May 15th. We have since opened childcare and many day camps applied under childcare provisions and have been approved. We opened restaurants. We have had places of worship open. Again, I want to emphasize that the guidances that are provided for all of these entities, as well as the salons and barber shops that we just opened, all of those are available online on our site. And they're, they really do provide really a good framework for developing a workplace that's safer for employees and customers. And also really good guidance for faith-based organizations. And we really do need all of these entities to really look at those guidances and, you know, utilize our site to submit plans so that we can provide feedback and help as needed and otherwise certify so that people are aware and customers coming in are aware that those businesses have been reviewed. So on Friday, the governor basically dropped a whole bunch of new guidances. And so we have, we received those. Some of the guidances, I think, are really good. Some of them, we need to add a couple of features for us locally. But our aim is this week to have the guidances up and available for people to submit plans for campgrounds. And they did also put out some revised childcare and day camp guidance that I think needs a little work. I think actually the previous one was a little bit better for childcare, but we're just adapting that a little bit. We'll also be posting the guidances for, you know, fitness hotels for recreational travel, zoos, museums, our single entities, sort of those spots. Bars and wineries are also on there. Our priority is to try and get campgrounds up and available and able to be approved as early as this week. And then we'll be moving, as well as some of the continued approval of childcare and day camps. And then the remainder will follow as we move through this. I just want to remind people that I know it's confusing when some of this comes out at the state level. And it's sort of, the governor had stated when these were released that they should be enacted no sooner than June 12th. But it doesn't mean that everything's open as of June 12th. We basically will be putting the guidances up, and then we will be reviewing and then opening these in a steady fashion over the next week. So people should stay tuned, but it's important to go and get online and get plans in there so that we can start reviewing them appropriately. I don't know if additional guidance is forthcoming. There's been, we have been very vocal about the need for guidance on youth sports and youth, outdoor youth activities in the summer that don't fall under sort of the camp or day camp sort of framework. And I think the state's aware of that, and I'm hopeful we'll see something soon. We've also been talking about gathering sizes and something from the state on that as well. I think from the state perspective, and I understand this, even though the guidances that have been put out so far do allow for people, larger groups of people to be in the same space. When you look at the guidances, they all involve really significant social distancing in those spaces and restructuring of how that happens. When we talk about gatherings of people that we can just be with, like we're with our family, we're not talking about distancing so much and all of that. So there is that little bit addition of mixing that happens that doesn't necessarily happen in those other settings. And I think that's the distinction that's being made sort of at the state level. But I think, at the same time, they're recognizing the need for all of us to have some ability to socialize in a meaningful way with people outside our family unit. And so we're really pushing for that as well. And I'm hoping those two things, especially the youth sports and the gathering sizes, will be forthcoming. The other one that we're waiting for is personal services and including things like nail salons and that type of thing. And so we have also voiced the need for that guidance as well. But again, from the framework that we have, the state releases the guidances that are vetted by Cal OSHA and industry as well as CDPH. And then we have the ability to open that sector as we approve those applications on, under those guidances. So just continuing our forward movement, monitoring our data daily, and working on actually building a sort of more robust dashboard online so that people will follow that data monitoring that we're doing. And that's all I was going to mention, I think, unless there are questions.
Okay, Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Doctor. Yeah, I just had a few, and people have been actually sending them today and last night, folks that didn't know if they could actually connect with us today. You mentioned the gyms a bit, so I think, I know, I know I'm like driving you crazy in your emails with gyms, but I'm finding that people are really feeling that it's necessary to help relieve their stress. And as everybody's getting like bowed up to here, I'm glad to know that we're going to.
Yep, I miss my classes too.
Yeah, I know, exactly. Community sports, you mentioned youth sports and, you know, little league, things like that. I was also asked about some of the senior leagues. If I whether they're not actually playing games, if they could even just do hit and, you know, catch practice, you know, if there's, if that is still in a later stage, and I think it is, but I just wanted to know. I'll just throw these all out at you. And then if someone is, let's say, a league or a larger group that is a sports league, and they are actually practicing now, would it be good for them to probably not practice until the actual guidance is there? That was last, and then the last question, again, is about the drag races. Because there's been some, that's the one I hear the most about. Obviously, Redwood Acres is out there too. And I know they're all trying, but there's confusion on whether they are considered an outdoor recreation or where they really fit. If you could just kind of like, because I'm having a hard time tracking it down. And, and I know that we've lost, somebody put something into the JIC, and I haven't heard if it's been found yet. And.
Okay.
Confusing. All my questions. Thank you.
Okay. So a few things, senior leagues, I don't know Supervisor Bass, you mean senior citizens or adult leagues?
Well, most of the ones I know are probably considered as seniors. Adult, okay.
Yeah, so, because my, one thing I would say is certainly for seniors, and I get the desire for all this to be out and about, but I do, would suggest caution in, in senior, with senior citizens in any gatherings right now. And, but that being said, the adult leagues, you're right, just like the children's leagues, there's nothing out there. My sense would be that when we see the youth sports stuff, I think that guidance may be transferable. And so I'm hoping that we'll be having that in hand fairly soon. And so we'll keep you posted on that. Right now, there is no guidance and no, it's, you know, the sort of adult sports leagues, it's not, it's not a sector that's open right now. For, and, you know, that being said, I understand, you know, that there's confusion about that. But right now, it's not, now, again, outdoor activity for adults who are distanced. And, you know, doing that, just like when we're going to parks or any of those things, that activity is okay. But the shared equipment, the interacting in a, in a close way without social distancing, all of that is not allowed at this time. Drag races, I agree. It's a weird sort of scenario. It doesn't fit well in many places. And I'm actually, at the drag races, I have not seen that application. But I have been having conversations with Redwood Acres and actually need to get back to them again today. So I know they have actually been, they, you know, constructing really a careful plan, no spectators, and trying to minimize risk in that setting. So I'll be in contact with them again today. I had a couple of other questions. So, but, you know, we'd like to try and make things happen that we can reasonably. One thing with the races, of course, is that even though they're not bringing spectators in, they're having relatively large numbers of people there. And so, again, it's outdoors, which is helpful. So we're just trying to figure that piece out.
Okay. And then, yeah, I think that was it. I guess, and I hopefully we can track down the, I know that there's a belief that it was sent to the sheriff and somehow it got sent to the JIC, and I've been trying to find it in the JIC.
Well, maybe they can just resubmit it if they've got the written plan.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I, I get confused every once in a while because we, we wait for the governor. And then when the governor does give us a chance to go, we want to add to it or take it. So I think that's the, we need to explain why we do that. I'm trying to figure out like bars and wineries, which he's kind of given the go-ahead to. But you said you're going to work on campgrounds, and I thought our biggest thing, travel and bringing people into our area, but we're going to promote campgrounds. Not that I'm against it, but it just, we, we seem to go two different directions. And I know I'm going to get 30 emails going, why campgrounds and things like that? So, and I, I don't know how we put a positive on this, but I just got an email saying that they're going to cancel Humboldt Youth Soccer this year. And they play at my facility, which is fine. I'm not worried about that. It's a nice break. But it's almost 900 kids in the greater Eureka area. And it's three months away. And since our message is, we don't do much positive, it's always negative. I mean, when we're making decisions three months into the future, I, we're, we're talking about, unless you believe the scenarios, we're talking about trying to control nature. Because this is a nature, that nature virus, and we're waiting for a vaccine. And I'm old enough and a lot of other peoples, I remember waiting for the, we're still waiting for a vaccine for AIDS. We may never have a vaccine on this. It's, it's a natural phenomenon. So I think we need to understand that we need to sometime get on with what we're doing in a careful mandated way. And I guess I'm beating, I'm beating a drum without a drumhead because I feel like I'm on an island here. But, I mean, I don't want to throw everything open, but when the governor gives us a little opening, I would love to think that we're ready to jump on it. And when he says we're going to be able to go on the 12th, maybe we can go on the 12th or at least have some guidelines or, you know. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering. And then I, I wonder about, it's just, we're getting a lot of messages. And I just, I thought I'd answered the questions because I'm getting asked them, and I have no idea how to answer them. So I.
Supervisor Bone, I would say that when you said I would hope that we would move forward in a thoughtful and careful way, I think that's what we're doing, actually. The governor has made it, and the CDPH has made it quite clear that them putting the guidances out does not mean that we are ready to open every sector at the same time. It is simply the earliest date that those things can be opened, not the date they open. So it's in terms of risk, we're trying to use a risk-based model here. And I think that we are trying to also respond to community needs as we can. And I think we all saw surveys from our community that campground availability for our local residents is very important to them from a recreational standpoint.
I didn't hear local level.
Pardon?
I didn't hear the local level. I just heard campgrounds, which means people are going to come in. I support the campground thing, but I'm just saying we're all promoting. We're not going to, we're not going to ask for IDs, I don't believe, are we?
No, you're right. And so, again, we do that, we do so with hesitation, but you're right. It's going to mean that there's traffic, the same thing in terms of hotels. If the health, state health officer lifts the essential travel limitation, then the potential for travel across the state occurs. I think, you know, frankly, that's something that, you know, we, we can't control to some extent. And we recognize that that is one of the biggest risks for our area is the introduction of additional cases from outside the area of virus. Because here, we have a relatively low prevalence right now. If we could wrap a big old bubble around our county and sit tight until, I agree, we may not have a vaccine, we may. But there may be some other therapeutic as well. There are lots of things in trial. But practically speaking, we can't do that. We're interdependent. And so we have to move forward. We have to recognize we're going to see more cases. We're going to see more deaths. That's just a part of moving forward through COVID. What we're trying to do is minimize the impact and do it sensibly. So I get that some things seem contradictory or difficult to mesh together. But when we look at campgrounds, we're looking at family units. There's pretty good thoughtful guidance on that from the governor's office on how to operate campgrounds in a safer way. And so we're going to move forward on that. The other guidances on childcare and day camps, those are the ones, again, there were some very good structure in the previous guidelines about sizes of groups and kids and how to do this thoughtfully. I think they lost a little bit in this revision, and so we're just looking at that. In terms of the other guidances, there are just some nuances where in the guidance itself, it leaves openings for what local public health is doing in your area and what your data looks like. So we want to make sure that we try and address those issues. And then we'll just be adding those on. Frankly, I have some concerns about the ability to do social distancing in some of the settings that, or for instance, in bars. I think that the, the framework that's proposed is that you go with your family to a bar and you social distance from everyone else in the facility. That's sort of the framework that's there. I don't know how reality-based that is. And so I think that that by nature is a little higher risk than some of the other things that we're talking about. And so we want to look at that carefully.
Director Stevens, thank you, Doctor. Director Stevens, you put your hand up.
Yeah, we've been talking and having conversations with some of the youth sports folks that have been reaching out, asking for what kind of recommendations we have around planning and different programming that they could be doing. And some are coming up with some really great ideas for when we're there. And I, I did actually have a conversation with the, the youth soccer league folks and advised them that they could be looking at alternative programming different than what they're used to doing. So instead of 900 kids on a field playing soccer every Saturday, what could that look like differently where it's smaller groups of kids instead of that large amount of kids? And they, you know, timing is everything right now. Everybody, all the, all the leagues are looking at how to plan for three months from now. And it's, you know, their, their, their board was meeting and their decision around not being able to do alternative programming, I suspect, is, is what led to that. So it's, it's, you know, yes, as folks who have kids, we're, we're all eager for our kids to have things to do. And so the folks that are, the leagues that are able to have alternative programming, to have smaller groups as Plan A and Plan B could be the, the larger group when we're ready for that. But for some, it's a barrier to how to do that with 900 kids. And we get it, and it's really unfortunate. But we're doing our best to, to get, provide technical assistance around that and how it could look differently. And what are some of the considerations in order to do that? And some of them are able to do that. Some of them have some really good planning in place. So I'm hopeful that, you know, come August, we'll be able to see, even July, we'll be able to see some activities for kids come up.
I think so too. It's been a real focus.
With, with that, I think, I don't think it's, I mean, because I think Humboldt Youth might be the biggest one. Like I said, with over 400 games going to be played out there in a, two, and I understand that they do, they rotate nights and stuff. But I, from what I understand, I, I guess you had a talk with them, and they decided they couldn't do it, so they closed up or shut the season down. I, most everything we're doing here is, we're anticipating, projecting, trying to get data to see what the future brings us. And I, I, and I know it's, I know it's being added in there. We just don't see it as much as the actualities of the harm that we're doing. And again, I'll beat the bandwagon for kids. That, I mean, we're, we're taking everything away from them, basically. I mean, we're, we're having education like this, which sucks for them. Their parents, that they're having no, they're not getting to do. And I'm not just saying sport. They're not getting to do band. They're not getting to do summer camp. They're not getting to do art camp. And I'm, I'm just wondering what the long-term, those are going to be long-term results that we can guarantee. There's going to be some problems coming out of this on purely speculation. I think we need to weigh in the, the other part of it. And maybe you have, but I've, I've got parents that are really worried about their kids. They're having separation anxiety. They're having, every comment I've said, we never talk about how many people that we, we've had 104, but I think we've only got 14. I mean, we, there are highlights we're hitting, but we don't spend much time on the highlights. We always talk about the desks and climbing and everything else, and that's what the kids hear. And I just think we're, we're doing a disservice to them. And then what the schools are doing, they're taking, anyway, it's, it's pretty frustrating for a lot of people. And, and I, I, I am trying my best to understand it. But with all the emails, phone calls and everything else, and parents on the other end that don't understand it, I'll still beat the bandwagon. We've, we've got to keep the message out there. We do have some positives. I mean, Curry County and Brookings has only had, I think, four cases or six cases. I mean, that's 95 miles away. You know, Del Norte's had a few more. But Redding's just went over 40, and they've got, they're 30% bigger than we are. So, I mean, our surrounding areas, we're doing really good. I know that can trip up in a heartbeat. But I, I think we need to talk about a little bit more about the positives. I know we like to talk about 110,000 deaths in the U.S., and it always comes up. So, I don't know, I just, there's so much negativity surrounding this, and it's a natural phenomenon that we're going to have to figure out. But I'd love to see a little more positive message, and I guess that comes, I guess that should include me. But it's, it's just been tough in the children.
Well, what I, what you, I guess, would call negative spin, I call just reporting the data. And I think that we've been trying in our messaging to talk about our successes as well, as well as the emphasis on moving forward because our data looks good. And I think that's been an important part of what we've been repeating in our environment. And frankly, as a pediatrician, I am well aware and very concerned about youth here and the need for structured activities for kids. So we're working very hard to voice that and the need for that guidance so we can do it safely. And we're working with the schools because, you know, my intent is that the schools are open in the fall. I don't know yet what it's going to look like, but they're going to be open.
There's costs for opening and there's costs for not opening, right? I mean, we're, there's no way around that at all, and we're, we're aware of that. It's, it's frustrating equally for, for those of us that are doing this every day, too.
Well, so speaking of the positive.
I appreciate everything you're doing. I really do.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. So speaking of accentuating the positive, let's talk a little bit about where we are. So we have actually, we are reopening. We've got the various sectors now that are up and running. We see all of these businesses being certified and opening up. What is the follow-through in terms of your program, especially at environmental health and those kinds of things? Michelle, I mean, Director Stevens, how do we keep pace with that and help people understand how to run a safe but viable business?
Yeah, so our consumer protection program and environmental health that does restaurant inspections is reaching out to the JIC-approved businesses and food facilities that have dine-in business plans to provide support around opening and implementing their plan, answering questions, making sure that the. uh, making sure that the facility is safe for the consumers to come in and, and partake. Um, and so they're, they're reaching out, scheduling appointments to come do site inspections, which is different than how we typically do it. Um, they're wearing protective equipment and socially distancing during that and trying to keep it to a minimum and doing it at a time when there's less um, individuals in the facility itself to keep risk low. Um, but really trying to support them in, in doing business in a different way than what they're used to. And um, you know, having a plan and implementing it and then making sure that, that it's working, that the people that are coming into that business are socially distancing, are wearing masks, if that's where they're, if that's in their business plan. Um, and how do they enforce that as a restaurant, for example, when they're not used to doing something like that? So it's a different way of operating, and so our staff are doing some outreach um, in order to support them doing that in particular.
Okay, great. Um, so I, any other questions? Because I had a couple. Um, okay, I'll go forward. Uh, I will tell you for sure that we got a lot of good feedback about opening up the hair salons. But the next question is, what about nails? What, what is the difference there? Why is it that that is?
I know, and I think, um, it, you know, my hope was actually that the nail guidance would be available at the same time and we would just be able to open both of those entities, and it just hasn't come through yet, and I don't know why. I know initially when the state was looking at nails versus haircuts, I think they were sort of weighing the idea that while uh, you know, a nail appointment might be forty-five minutes or an hour, you know, most people's haircuts are much more brief, and you know, you're not there as long, that kind of thing. So I think they were a little worried about the sustained face-to-face contact and then, you know, the, the touching and that kind of thing. Um, I think it'll be out any day. I'd be very surprised if we don't see it very shortly, and then we'll be able to move on that as well, because I agree. And since they're all like located service, it would just make sense.
So and on the question of the campground, so as I understood it, our local campgrounds would be open potentially this weekend. Is that still the case or is there?
Yeah, I think they, they remember the campgrounds just got the state guidance this past Friday. And so I think they're working on, on developing their plans around this based on that guidance. And they may not be ready, you know, to enact that yet. But, you know, basically the guidance will be available online and they'll be able to put in their plan when they have it and will work hard to get those plans approved quickly. The, the JIC has been doing an amazing job at reviewing plans. I think they're over, you know, fourteen hundred or something now. And uh, and remember, we've only been doing this a few weeks. So um, they've done amazingly and um, you know, they're, they're, they're keeping pace with what's coming in the door. So um, but I don't know Sheriff, if you have thoughts on that, but I think, you know, the, the, my sense from the campgrounds is I think that again, until they have the guidance in hand, it's hard for you to know exactly what they need to do. And so they're probably really pulling those plans together and making sure they're good before they come in.
Do you want to say something Sheriff?
Uh, just briefly, yeah, there, it's gonna take a little bit of time for campgrounds to pull together some of the stuff. Our, our county campgrounds are, are gonna take this next week and a half to evaluate, to, to make some modifications. Um, Director Mattson advised that uh, we're gonna have some kind of announcement um, mid next week um, about our local county campgrounds. So I would just urge people to call ahead and make sure that uh, the campground that they're looking at is open. There are a lot of day use areas that are open. Um, but there are also private camps around that can apply and do those modifications and become certified. Um, but that, that, that will take some time as well, so please call ahead.
And so then what's the difference with regard to the state campgrounds? Because I keep getting people, uh, I, I got, I was approached by somebody who said they looked at a reservation and they were advised by the state that they could move forward now. So what's the deal with the state campgrounds?
Well, I think that the state obviously governs their campgrounds and starting this Friday, they can, they can start, you know, taking reservations and those kind of things. And various campgrounds throughout the state, you know, there's campgrounds all over and they have a website that kind of governs that, uh, that, that reservation process. So how it's done locally here, you know, through private or county or state, it all depends on which campground you want to go to.
Okay, so at the state level, as of this weekend, they could be open?
Yeah, my assumption is they're following the state guidance completely. And um, we're, again, we're looking at our, the state guidance and then um, helping with planning there for local, one to these private and, and county.
And so uh, I thought also then the hotels might be able to have uh, travel for leisure?
Yeah, that's, that's included in the list there. Um, and um, so again, you know, it, it, it opens us up for travel, which, you know, frankly, I, you know, realistically is happening to some degree. Um, and um, there's a case to be made for doing so safely. Um, so again, we're reviewing that hotel guidance. Uh, we do need to think about things. If, you know, what happens if somebody becomes ill while they're here staying in a hotel? The need to isolate and quarantine in that setting, um, that really isn't addressed in the, in the guidance. So we need to make sure somehow that people are aware of that uh, when they're traveling through as well.
So for local hoteliers or people who have rentals, they can in fact honor bookings that were made for this period of time then, starting this weekend or?
No, we're, I mean, again, it's one of the sectors that the governor, that they provided the guidance as of Friday, um, saying nothing could open before Friday. We have to take that guidance, put it online and make that available. In addition, they have, they can pull that guidance up now, um, Supervisor Fennell, and they can um, begin their plans if they don't have them. Remember, a lot of hotels are operating now for essential workers. So they just need to modify if there's some additional guidance there. Um, and um, and then, you know, we'll, I would anticipate next week, we'll, we'll be able to sort of make a, give people an idea about date um, for when we'd be moving forward with that as well. I mean, when those would actually be open. So, but they can put in their plan when it's available online at the JIC. We can go through, um, approve the plan and have it ready for certification as soon as we open hotels to recreation.
Okay. Super, thank you, Doctor Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. I mean, I, I appreciate, you know, the, the trajectory that we are on. Um, and you know, this is all in the context of all our past conversations where we have been talking about families and kids and all that stuff. And um, and I realize, you know, there was some voices in there talking about that early on, and I'm glad we're there now. Um, and again, there are summer camps that are happening, day camps are happening. Um, not all of them, but I want, you know, they, they, it's definitely in the mix. And I appreciate that we're, we're doing that. I appreciate that the campgrounds are talking about being opened. Um, I, I think there is, there is the dance associated with or the mix with relationship to the state travel. Um, it would, I would appreciate that, that if um, it, our local campgrounds, if they can in their processes, have some ability to hopefully screen for local residents in that, especially if state travel is still not allowed, then, you know, we got, and I would, I would really appreciate it if our state parks and national park would also uh, do that as well. I think it'd be, I think they could do it in their reservation process, and I think they should do it, especially if the state is mandating no travel. Um, I'd be, that would be really great. Um, and, and it would have some, open some availability for us locally to be able to use those facilities. Um, but in that, I also wanna ask that we or talk about, um, you know, managing expectations because uh, we have low prevalence here. It was, I think uh, illustrated in the numbers of um, of folks that tested positive for the antibody was one percent of the one thousand or so folks that tested. And those are people who probably, many of them thought that they had had it. That's why they got tested for the antibody, right? So, so what that shows to me is that we have a community that's still uh, very vulnerable to um, to infection if, if uh, from the outside. And I think that's something that we have concerns about, and I know we're not, you know, stopping traffic or stop, stopping airlines and all those things. But I guess my, when I'm talking about managing expectations is we could have a flare up and an outbreak here. Um, if we are get, if we're, you know, really loosening up and loosening up, which is part of what we're talking about and managing for that. I'm not saying that we need to tighten up, but understanding that if we do, that then some of these restrictions may come back. And I want people to, you know, to ha- have an understanding that that, that's something that could happen and not. And also, I, I've been talking to people who are making travel plans outside the area. And, you know, my advice to them is be prepared that in that place there you may be going, there may be an outbreak there that happens that shuts down your ability to go there too. So make sure that, you know, you're, you're in our expectations, that we understand that there's potential for that flux to occur in the future. Um, and be prepared for that, just like we prepare for other events in, in terms of our, um, you know, stocking up on things. I'd say, you know, now's a good time to stock up on stuff uh, as opposed to when there's a rush and those sorts of things. And I, I think we're in a good, I think because of the work everyone's been doing, we're in a good place to, to do these activities that we're talking about doing. But I, I just want to make sure we're managing for expectations because these things can change. And there's a lot of modeling that shows that, um, you know, in the fall, we could really see some, especially if we're, you know, getting out and doing and, and socializing, which I think in many ways we should be doing for our mental health. Um, but being prepared that we may have, we may have to fits and starts. I guess there was the term, the, the hammer and the dance or something like that is what they called it, and I guess we're in the dance now, so.
Right.
And I enjoy it.
We're, we're sort of in a sweet spot right now. And um, it's allowing us to move forward. And I've answered questions a lot with people saying things like, well, you know, they're, you know, like in Chasta where they had the rodeo and, and large numbers and, and no big fallout from that. And you know, my answer to that is, as you pointed out Supervisor Wilson, right now our northern counties have a pretty low natural prevalence of the virus. It's there. But it's not circulating at high levels. So you can imagine that if you have a prevalence, say of one percent, and you've got, you know, just a handful of people in an event that may actually have the virus, your risk of contracting it um, is relatively low. Um, when we start to see increasing prevalence in our community, as happens with, um, I would say at this point, it hasn't been people coming into our community. It's been our community members traveling out and coming back um, that's introduced it. But as we begin to mix our populations more, we're going to see a higher prevalence locally. And so these gatherings will carry a higher risk of exposure. And so you're right, um, we, we have to move forward. We need to do it. We're going to, we're accepting the consequence of increased cases um, with that. Um, so I think our, an important piece of our managing expectations is to say that um, and say also that it's important to protect our most vulnerable populations as well. And so um, you know, our, our individuals with medical conditions and who are older are more vulnerable. And um, measures we can do to help protect them are helpful, like masking in our community.
Uh, one thing I, Supervisor Madron and Supervisor Bone and, and Sheriff as well. But one thing I wanted to reflect on, and Supervisor Bass, great. Um, one thing I want to reflect on as we're talking now about going into the summer. Remember when this started and people were talking about closing down the county because the cases that we were seeing were from travel? This is what we're looking at now. Travel is what has impacted Humboldt County as opposed to uh, Trinity or other counties around us. We have a higher number in this region. And part of, along, a large part of it was travel. So we really need to be cognizant that as we open up, we more than likely will uh, be dealing with that again. Um, so I'm going to Supervisor Madron, Supervisor Bone, Supervisor Bass.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, well, I, I wanted to put out a big thank you to the community uh, for all of what, all the efforts that everybody's been putting in. I mean, this is uh, trying times for all of us um, on every level. And the work that communities and families have been doing uh, and businesses to try and deal with all this is just over the top incredible to me. Uh, I know it's hard. It's frustrating. We're all hurting. You know, and I've got ten grandkids uh, living next door that I haven't been able to hug for three months. Uh, but I get to see them and, you know, we do dance parties at a distance. We, um, my daughters have been coming up with ingenious methods to keep them busy and engaged. The driveway has become a skate park and this and that and everything else. And, you know, hats off to, to my daughters and to all the parents out there that are finding creative ways to keep their kids involved and engaged. And it's not easy, you know, I remember when we were getting into this thinking, wow, month, that's, that's gonna be a long time, but two months, no way. And here we are, three months into it. And um, so I just want to put out a huge thank you to everybody for everything you're doing. And to you Sheriff Hansel and uh, Dr. Frankovich and Michelle, uh, all of the staff at the JIC and the uh, the Emergency Operations Center. I mean, everybody that's been working tirelessly. Uh, I'm sure you're beyond uh, the reserve in your gas tanks at this point. It's just, this is huge. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're really thanking all the parents, the businesses and all of you here at the county for what you've been doing. Uh, hats off to you. Uh, I don't know how you pull it off day after day and get up and do this. You have provided tremendous leadership. I support you fully. And uh, I know none of this is easy, so thank you for doing this balancing act. Uh, no easy job. So that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Madron, uh, Sheriff.
Thank you Supervisor Madron on that too. Um, I just wanted to just clarify, it's uh, confirmed with their JIC and also looking at the state website that the state parks is not taking reservations at this time. And then they uh, they contacted state parks and they said they're probably two weeks out from taking uh, reservations at any campsite throughout the state. Um, so, so we do have some time there, you know, for this to, to happen, for us to get clarification on the state level as far as traveling goes. And, and so hopefully in two weeks, there'll be some, some different direction on the state level and then modifications will be made and then we may see uh, some local campgrounds open up.
If they were open already, I was thinking they must have seen that guidance earlier than everybody else, though must not have, so. Uh, but just for a moment, if I could um, just say for Supervisor Madron, I, I echo the thank you to the community. I, you know, as I look at all of these plans, the guidances that come out, they are not easy. It is not easy to adhere to all of this and operate your business. It's, the, the bar is very high for doing this um, in the right manner. And so, you know, I really applaud the efforts of the people opening and trying to do that well. Um, as well as the, as you said, the families out there who have been dealing with this for a long time already. So.
Supervisor Bone.
Uh, and I just, and to echo what uh, Supervisor Madron said eloquently, I think we've been thanking them every week and everybody involved. I think we have to thank humanity for getting through all of the things that we're going through and making us all think. But it was, it was just kind of, as, as our community does what they're being asked, um, I think they're like, I guess it's called the carrot and the stick. They keep asking for a little bit more and why not us? We, we hear a lot of why not? Why can't I have a cookie? He got a cookie. And you made the comment about the, the rodeo over in Cottonwood, that there was no big fallout. From what I understand, there was no fallout. Which is from, from the number count over there, fourteen days after. So I just, I, that, that's a big, that's a big statement, that they had thirty-four hundred people or thirty-one hundred people and didn't have it. And I think, I don't know, I know this virus doesn't know state lines, county lines. Actually, we're finding out national lines from our first batch of travel. But um, I'll just, I'll just go back. I wanted to echo what Supervisor Madron said. And being here every day and seeing what you guys are, how much is going on here and letting people know. Our county offices are open. People still think we're closed, but a lot of the county offices are open to do the county business for what we're here for. So I know um, the vital records and, and all these things. Uh, Sheriff's been twenty-four seven, so that they're still, they're still doing their job and, and thank you guys and having quite a few people in the, so. Um, I'm just saying, as we move forward, giving some more, back to what I said, more positives and more stuff for our kids um, is, 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 is critical right now. And I, I don't think, I, I think you may realize being a pediatrician, um, being a grandparent and somebody that owns a recreation complex, after they canceled the soccer and started getting the phone calls saying, not my call, not my call. I, 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 I'd look at it a different way, so. If somebody's calling, so I will just, we'll figure that out someday when they all get back to it. But if we can get, just stay a little more positive whenever we can. I, and this is a pretty hard thing to be positive about, and positive is the job that everybody's doing, trying to get us through this. But here we go.
I'd be very surprised if we don't have youth sports open, um, I mean, available to people to participate in July. You know, I, I'd be very surprised.
And, and if we do it like camps, and my fear is do it like camps, only twelve people, including the coach, and most soccer teams have eleven. Um, it's, it's gonna be kind of confusing, so.
Yeah, we'll see what the guidance says, but yeah.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And perhaps this was covered and I just, I just missed it. But you know, as people are starting to travel, I, I think the example that I keep thinking of is this whole Vegas thing, when they reopen. I mean, we're lining up outside in groves. And to me, that is actually something that's a lot more scary to me than us, you know, having things here. Are we going to be starting to ask in all of our, I got screened three times yesterday for a dental situation? Like, I don't have, I I never had my temperature taken so much, so much in my life, right? But and they ask all these questions. Are we going to start asking questions like, you know, if we do see things coming out of Vegas, are we going to be saying, have you traveled to a higher risk community lately? Or what are we going to try to do? Or are we going to go to at least try to, you know, at least to get tested when they come back? You know, because I'm, I know, I don't exactly comfortable that Vegas is going to be able to, you know, keep all the social distancing and whatever. And the pools, we've already seen that doesn't happen.
Yeah, well, I I would say I agree with you. I think some venues are higher risk than others in terms of just your possible exposures. And I think that what's become difficult with travel now is because because of sort of widespread community transmission. I mean, yeah, we have a lower amount of that than there is in some other areas. But it's becoming increasingly difficult to for people to sort out what's considered high risk and low risk. Because even as your destination might be lower risk, where are you going through on your way? And so what I think our messaging to people, we're kind of moving to is that, you know, any travel presents risk. What what you do when you travel is probably even more important than where you go. So are you in large gatherings? Are you masking? Are you social distancing? Are you, you know, following all of that other guidance? Or are you going to Vegas unmasked in large groups of people and not social distancing or washing your hands? So what you do when you travel is going to have a real bearing on your level of risk. So right now, again, the 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 Health Officer orders, I understand it still stands for essential travel only. That may get modified fairly soon. I think the recommendation will still be that you limit travel. But the reality is people in our area are going outside the area for all kinds of reasons. Some of the medical, some of them for family. So we want to provide them with some practical guidance when they come back. Not everyone who goes for a medical appointment cannot be at work for 14 days when they return. So what we're recommending to people is that they monitor themselves for 14 days when they come back. And for symptoms and for fever. And that if they or a household member become ill, then they need to talk to their provider, need to isolate and possibly get tested at that point. So I will be trying to sort of help get that understanding out there in the community as well and to employers.
Just have a, I'd love to hear why Vegas is vital or essential travel. So I'm sure one of these days we'll we'll get the definition of that, but I think people are, you know, kind of going a little, they need to get out, they want to do things.
Well, and again, I don't know what they're doing in Nevada. They may not have that limitation on essential travel. But right now, as I understand it, we still.
Instead.
Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. Well, I just, I mean, I I'll echo all of the thank yous that went around. I think that they're all very well deserved, both from, especially within the community, you know, the anxieties of families and business owners and everybody. We share those too, many of those. Those of us who have kids in our own houses and, you know, and are working within the community, this is, this is, this is, this is a hard time. And in my before statement, I said something about I enjoy, but it's really, I'm encouraged. I mean, is probably a much better word, the trajectory that we're going. It's encouraging that we're moving in this in this, in this trajectory. It's, it is a light, I would say, in in the way that we're doing these things. I don't know, this is, this is just a hard time. I want, I mean, I, the the decisions that were made early on in this and the decisions we were making now are all imperfect. I just, you know, there's nothing about this. I think that we have to really understand that and be really clear that, you know, there was a mass amount of decisions made at the beginning to address what is clearly a worldwide pandemic. And, you know, and we're in a very lucky place that our geography has limited exposure to this area. But that has a lot to do with the, not just our community's response, but then, you know, in terms of nationwide about what we are doing. And now we're in that process of, you know, basically pulling off the layers of that shell, you know. And in conjunction with state mandates and trying to figure that all out. And none of it is perfect. But I, but I absolutely appreciate the work and the diligence of our Public Health Department and officer and as well as our sheriff in, you know, in having that constant conversation with the state on all these levels. I just really, I think people are, some people may not understand how many hours you guys are putting into this to, you know, there is no such thing as a weekend and there's no such thing, you know, for months to really get this, to get us back into the, into this space. And it doesn't, I I would say that, you know, I get calls, I had one this morning. Some, you know, people are reading headlines that, you know, make it sound like everything's all okay. Or maybe they read a headline and having those conversations, which are really hard. And and I, you know, where we have them and I, on a daily basis, multiple folks. I'm at the, at the functional level that you guys are having with regards to, you know, like leagues and those sorts of things. I just want to say, like, my heart goes out to, 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 to our staff in in having those conversations like we are. They're just, they're, they're tough and I appreciate that. So that's all I had to say. I just want to, you know, we're, we're working and you guys are even working harder. So I appreciate it.
I wanted, in addition to that, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I want to give voice. I know that you all get calls from people, you know, eager to move forward and sometimes frustrated by pace. But I, I, I certainly am getting a lot of people reaching out who are concerned about going too fast and concerned about a forward moving pace that we have. So I think there's, you know, it's, it's difficult to to help everyone feel comfortable with where we are. And but I think, you know, it's important to give voice to the people who also have concerns and and want us to have a thoughtful approach moving forward.
Yeah, I want to echo what everybody said in in terms of appreciation for all their work. And I do think that it's, it is a function of being in your position to to take the long view. And it's extremely important that that long view has been taken so that now we're at the point where if we do have a surge, we are, our hospitals can handle it. We're ready to go. And and people are not going to have to be scared if suddenly they hear extra numbers of people, which there probably will be. But we also have to look at how we're doing it. This, this certifying of businesses is working extremely well. People are coming in with their plans. They're getting help from people in their sector as to how they can do it well. And there, as the doctor said, there's around 1,400 now who've actually gone through that process, which is pretty amazing. And so I think, you know, and as we are talking today, we're talking about bringing others into the process. So once you get certified, once you save what you're doing to keep people and yourself and your employees safe, you can move forward. And it's, it's happening actually quite a bit. I'm very grateful that we're going to be able to see the day camps functional, functioning that people who have their kids hanging around them all the time can both give the kids a break from you and give you a break from the kids. And and just that the kids get wind up hanging with each other because I know it's important for them to be with their friends and to have that social contact that we all long for. So we're getting there. And thank you very much for all your work. Any further questions from the board before I open it up to public comment? Okay, with that, I will open it up to public comment. I know that Sheriff Hansel will have to break away now for another meeting. But thank you very much for being here this morning. And Ryan, do we have anybody who'd like to make comment on this item?
Yes, Sheriff, we do have public comment on this item.
Welcome.
Hello, this is Corey Agar.
Morning, Corey.
Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments about the Emergency Service Act. According to California Emergency Service Act, state emergency can only be called if the threat overwhelms the current resources of the state. And furthermore, the state of emergency has to be terminated at the earliest possible date. So the governor declaring a state of emergency caused by such conditions as air pollution, fire, flood, storm, epidemic, riot, drought, sudden or severe energy shortage would be the case is that a state of emergency can be declared. One related to public health can only be declared if the threat overwhelms the response capabilities of California's healthcare practitioners. So we have thousands of healthcare workers being furloughed in California and zero evidence of grounds for this state of emergency based on public health. There is no threat that overwhelms the current resources of the state since the COVID-related deaths in California are 4,600 less than the average flu. Therefore, COVID-19 cannot lawfully be classified as an epidemic. An epidemic is when there are disproportionately large numbers experiencing an outbreak of disease. And there's no evidence of this in California. Therefore, the basis for the state of emergency is invalid and unlawful. As we have seen clearly in California, the virus fatalities, they're approximately one third of the typical fatalities of regular seasonal flu. The state of emergency should be terminated according to California law, which states at the earliest possible date that conditions warrant. Therefore, no legal grounds exist for that. And when the state of emergency is terminated, then the orders and regulations shall be of no further force or effect, which would include the stay-at-home order, social distancing, wearing a mask, closing of businesses and schools. There are countless reports of other state legislative bodies extending or denying their state of emergency declaration, but there's nothing from California. So we're currently over 60 days with no response to that. Also, in regards to the face masks, the, I would like to or to rescind the face mask order as the CDC guidelines, the studies linked on the CDC website do not correlate to anything dealing with face masks. The New England Journal of Medicine on May 21st just put out that wearing a mask outside of healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection. The WHO recommends that face masks only be worn by people that are working with infected people or if they are sick themselves, not by healthy people.
Excuse me, caller, you have, you have 10 seconds. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say Cal OSHA also states that face masks do not prevent spread of the disease. So. And also, I say Supervisor Wilson, I would recommend that you hug your grandchildren. All right, that's all.
Thank you very much, caller. Next caller, please.
Still, it's Ken Swawski. That was some interesting information. I'm hoping that you folks will fact check that. If the facts are true, then of course, the correct response would be to to follow what that person said. If not, I'd be interested in hearing the outcome of a thorough fact check. I hope we are learning from our mistakes before. And if we're not screening people at the airports, complete screening there, including testing, everybody who's coming in at this time, that's your place, that's your choke point, has been prior. And I still have have not received information that we aren't doing that yet. So, no, we're not willing to learn from our mistakes. Until you start learning from them, you will repeat your mistakes. That's how everything works. The information given to like the soccer people, anybody else from your health expert should be, plan on possibly getting these things done and able to do them. I'd much rather have my children be a little disappointed that we had to cancel it last minute because we couldn't do it or we had to delay it one week and still have the, have these kids getting out there to do what they need to do. The doom and gloom needs to go away. I personally am scheduling international travel for the month of July. I am going to a place where I don't think they've had any deaths at all in any of the areas that I will be. And I have to pass through LAX, unfortunately. But I'm, I'm willing to do that. It's time we get on with our lives. It's time we actually look at the facts and figures. And I really want, I asked last time, I really appreciate the fact, you know, that we've only had 1% of the people appear to have had this. The fact I would like to have is what percentage of, we know that no deaths in the children, elementary school or high school. And I would like to have a fact brought forward. How many people actually have those and how many have been hospitalized in that particular demographic? That's extremely important as far as making decisions whether our children are going to have good mental and physical health this summer. And up until maybe, maybe November it comes back. But I'm going to, I'm going to be on the optimistic side. And I wish that everybody out there would be on the optimistic side and do whatever you can to plan for these kids to get out there. And don't cancel things now. It's way too early to be canceling things. We have good, good weather frequently through November. So thank you, Rob, for being here to speak on this particular topic.
Thank you, Ken. Is there any further public comment, Ryan?
Sheriff, that concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board and is there anyone who'd like to address anything that was spoken about Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was just, it was interesting, the gentleman who talked, and because I've heard this a lot about, you know, the flu kills more. And I've been talking to a couple of doctors who have nothing to do with county health. They're just regular old people in the last few days. And, you know, when they're saying that it is more highly contagious and, you know, people are kidding themselves if they think that, you know, the death toll isn't higher. So I was just looking, I know for California, I said, what's the average number of flu deaths in a year? Because I I wanted to find out. And it's like 7,000 almost. And so I said, so how many flu deaths of COVID-19 in California? It came out to something around 4,600. Okay, so he goes 7,000 for a year, 4,700 in about three months. You know, I, I think, I think I still believe that when people say that, they're really not looking at the facts or picking out the certain years that they want to look at, quite frankly. And so after talking to another medical professionals, I still feel that, you know, when people say that one to me, I just have to say, I really don't agree with that. So, and I'm not going to be the one to take a chance with my life, though. So on that, on that.
Supervisor Bone.
Estimated food deaths according to the CDC was 24,000, 2018. We're at 110,000, that's in the US. We're at 110,000 on a shorter basis. This is a serious thing. And this, I understand it's a lot like the flu. I I fully understand where our health officers coming from sometimes. No, I mean, I fully understand because this is in addition to flu deaths. This isn't with flu deaths. This is in addition. So when we we do our restraints and everything else and and the scenarios, I'm not, I I would like to see the kids get released a little bit more, open up a little bit more. But it's the same reason we wear seat belts. It's the same reason we do a lot of things. So I just, that's what the numbers are on flu.
Thank you so much Supervisor Bone. I, I, you know, I want to ask the doctor if you would. And I definitely want to stay on the positive here. We need to. But we need to stay focused on the science at this particular time. And scientists all over the world are working on this problem. And I have heard and had constituents ask me about the prevalence of strange complications for kids. And so I want, if you wouldn't mind, to, for you to at least give some wisdom to parents in terms of the fact that their kids are not immune, that they're, that, that it can be a really important thing to protect them from as well.
Sure. I mean, it's one of the things that's really hard about this virus is that we're learning so much more about it all the time as more people get it. And things that don't happen as commonly, it takes a certain number of people to get a serious form of the illness for you to see those complications. So, you know, it'd be really easy if we knew that, you know, everybody who, or, you know, almost everybody who got this recovered completely. But as we're going along, we're seeing that individuals, particularly those who had more serious disease, may have some long-term complications in terms of, you know, renal kidney effects, cardiac. complications in terms of, you know, renal, kidney effects, cardiac, neurologic. And interesting, as you pointed out, sort of a piece of the pie in the illness in children we've seen is this sort of vasculitis, you know, where they can get inflammation in the blood vessel linings and cause multiple other problems related to that. And so that was highlighted in New York in the outbreaks where they were seeing, you know, vast numbers of cases. And, you know, so we're learning more about that phenomenon now. So there are lots of medical reports about that because we don't have a large number of people who've had that diagnosis yet. It's a little bit hard to figure out what the true, you know, incidence of that is or will be in this outbreak, but it's certainly of concern. And so I guess my message to people is the vast majority of us are going to do fine. The vast majority of us will make it through this and very likely have no long-term health consequence of it. However, there's a subset of us, some of us because we're more medically vulnerable, some of us just because you have sort of an idiosyncratic reaction to the infection at this time, some of us are going to have more severe complications and some people will die of the infection. And so all of this going forward is an attempt to really just try, when we're getting a high prevalence in our community and we're getting a lot of people sick, trying to just control the, again, the faucet so that we're not, so that everybody, when they do get sick, has the best access to care possible. And when we're in a rural area, we know that our capacity during flu season is difficult sometimes. And so, you know, we know that with large numbers of cases that we could see with COVID, we may be in that same boat. So, again, what we want to avoid happening is where everyone in the state is struggling at the same time so that their resource is available to everybody. And again, it's just the rationale for kind of moving forward with some thoughtfulness.
And then one thing that came up in that discussion and public comment was about masks. And as I get it, as I understand it, we're at the stage now where we're pretty comfortable moving forward so long as people do facial covering and social distancing. So, any idea, it seems to me that we're going to be asked to do that for quite some time.
Yeah, and I understand it's confusing. The caller is right, the WHO came out with some guidance that honestly has left many of us kind of puzzled. You know, everybody can point to studies all over the spectrum on this. I think the current best information we have right now says that, that there's utility to wearing masks, not in terms of protecting the wearer. And I think some of the things that the caller cited are things that have to do with wearer protection as opposed to community protection. The masks specifically are not to protect you when you wear it. The mask is to protect the people around you, and the idea is that if everyone's wearing them, we're protecting each other. And, but they're right in the sense that if I were going into the operating room to do surgery, I would not be wearing a cloth mask. Ideally, it's just, you know, there's a different effectiveness level for these masks, but for its purpose of containing the spray that we have with talking and interacting, sneezing and coughing, it's helpful. At least the best information we have right now says that that's true. And so I think it's a, it's an inexpensive remedy. It's easy for the vast majority of us to do, and if it even reduces risk by 10%, 15%, 20% in our community, I would argue that that's worth it. I think the numbers on what this really can do for us are things that we'll understand as we go down the road. But it's something that's easy for us to do, and I think it's a benefit at this time.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the earlier caller, yeah, I give air hugs to my grandchildren every day. It was not Supervisor Wilson that has the grandkids, it's me. I have 16 of them, and I'm lucky to have 10 of them living next door. I get to see them every day, and frankly, they're the ones that want to maintain the mask and the distance because they want to protect me. I'm 68, I have rheumatoid arthritis, so I'm immune compromised. So there you go. I'm trying to follow the advice of the health officer and the experts in this. And, you know, I heard this the other day, perfect is not on the menu. You know, as Supervisor Wilson said, we're all doing the best we can here. We're all human beings, and we're performing the most amazing balancing act that I've ever seen between trying to protect everybody, but also trying to get the economy back up and running. And if you don't think that's a difficult balancing act, I, I'm not sure what you're watching, but it is. And so we're all human, we're doing the best we can, perfect is not on the menu, we're just doing the best we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank you, Dr. Frankovich, Director Stevens, also the sheriff who had to leave early, really appreciate this. It just goes to the level of interest in this issue that we can have these meetings every week practically, and there's always questions. So thank you for being there to help us understand and to guide us through and get us through safely, and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. So that will get us to our next item on the agenda. We actually have a fairly short meeting, but, but I do really appreciate the help people for being here this long. So the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Any comments or questions on the consent calendar?
I'm going to move that we approve the consent calendar, and I will have just a briefest of comments.
Second, I have comments also.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussions on the consent calendar? Supervisor Wilson, and then Supervisor Bass?
I'll let Supervisor Bass go first, and I'll do it at the end, it's fine.
All right, thank, I just want to do the thing, Supervisor Bone, for putting on the elder abuse awareness item. I don't know if anyone else is noticing this, and I think people think of abuse as, you know, one specific thing or another. I'm getting a lot of financial elder abuse things happening that I'm hearing about. And just last week, actually, Count Connie and her team was able to help uncover something that someone, you know, an accountant came to me with saying, gosh, one of our, our clients got this from their, one of her social security number, and she's not, you know, whatever this, this note was. And, and there was a number, and, you know, Connie actually took the extraordinary steps and called that number, and after she finally figured out and told the person it was a fraud, they cursed her out and hung up on her. But then we were able to work more clearly, and so now we've got a notice and warning out about that. But there's a lot of that happening, and I think people are more susceptible to that now. So I do appreciate Supervisor Bone bringing that up, and, and I think financial abuse is probably one of the most insidious types because you don't really know what's happening until you hear that someone's totally drained their bank account. So, and just a note that the IRS, no one, they will not ask you for your social security number in writing, and they will not call, I mean, they will not call you and ask the certain information. So people should just look really, really sideways at anybody who asks their personal information, especially our elderly friends.
Thank you, Supervisor Bass, Supervisor Bone, and Supervisor Wilson.
Okay, and yeah, on this item, and Supervisor Bass is exactly right. And Sheriff Hansel isn't on here, but he will tell you, no, PG&E, which there's a great PG&E scam going on about that they like to call, and then they'll tell you to go buy gift cards or something at the drugstore, very convincing. There are so many things, but they will not ask you, no government agency will ask you over the phone for your social security number. There's other avenues to change to do that and everything else. So just be aware of, if they're contacting you, and if your spidey senses go off, hang up on them. If they don't go off, hang up on them and contact your financial advisor, your tax accountant, your children, or somebody of our neighbor, if you have any concern, especially for our elders. I've got a few, we've got a few in our neighborhood, and should be aware of what's going on for your elders, and that's the whole idea. Because elder abuse is financial, mental, and physical. It, I mean, it hits a full spectrum at their weakest point, so that's why, and I'm at that point, so keep an eye out for me.
Yes, of course, Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Wilson?
Everything has been addressed in those comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Chair Fennel, we do have public comment on this item.
Very good, great. Welcome.
Estelle, Ken Swawski, what happened, my dad passed here last year, I think he was 94 or something, but within a year or so, or two years before passing, he spent a whole day looking for his grandson that was allegedly in jail. And he went around, he went to the courthouse, he went around, and when I told him finally at the end of the day it was a scam, he still didn't quite understand it. He said, well, what are we going to do about him being in jail? So I do understand, and we all get these calls, we get them more and more, I don't know if they have age-specific calls we get, but I do think that's really important. Thank you for bringing that forward. I also like, wish to thank you for item number C4. And it's a letter basically to the Honorable Mike McGuire, our representative in Sacramento regarding outdoor requirement for cannabis of Appalachian origin. And I did get permission from HUMAP to say thank you to you folks, and so I'll just read just a little bit of what's on here, so the public's aware. Part of this letter says, "It has been brought to our board's attention that there is a critical flaw in the post-plan that must be fixed for the program to have value and integrity moving forward. We are respectfully requesting that the statute be amended to reserve AO designations exclusively for cannabis that is planted in the ground, in open air, and no use of artificial life during the flowering stage of cultivation." And I do concur, you know, later in the letter says, "This change will help our county, region, and state further advance our commitment to confront global climate change and secure our collective future through meaningful and immediate action." So thank you so much for sending this, it's been a long time coming, and hopefully our Honorable Mike McGuire will be receptive and make the changes that you are requesting. It's one of those things that I felt for a long time that that is our niche, that is what we should be permitting, and the rest of these permits, as far as I'm concerned, for things that don't fall within this guideline are not the future of Humboldt County as far as branding and marketing. So again, thank you for sending this letter requiring our appellations, our outdoor requirement for cannabis of Appalachian origin. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Any further public comment, Ryan?
Yes.
Hi, can, hi, can people hear me?
Yes, absolutely.
Hello, hi, this is Carrie Schrock, and I'm the program manager with DHHS, and I'm the manager of Adult Protective Services, In-Home Supportive Services, in our Veterans Services office. And I just wanted to comment about the proclamation for elder abuse awareness, and thank you to the board who have been supportive of this. And this month, we celebrate elder abuse awareness, June 15th is actually the National Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Because of COVID, we're doing things a little bit differently than in-person outreach. We do have a banner that is being hung over Harris Street and with some, with information about the proclamation and to raise awareness of elder abuse. We're also providing information to our community members, and we have some of our community partners that are helping hand out flyers with things like food boxes that provide information on abuse and signs of abuse and what to do if you suspect abuse. And what people were saying about the financial abuse really is pretty, it's, it's kind of on the top of everyone's minds with COVID, with people taking advantage of people who are isolated and lonely and pretty vulnerable right now. So we also work, we have a collaboration with the district attorney and our local law enforcement agencies called the Elder and Vulnerable Adult Services Team, or EVAST, and we get together and talk about our mutual cases for physical, sexual, financial abuse. And it's been really great to work with the district attorney and law enforcement because some people who prey upon our elders will maybe move to a different law enforcement jurisdiction, and when we're collaborating more on these cases, we can make sure that everybody is taking the appropriate steps to do what they need to do to prosecute these cases and so that we can also, you know, prevent it from happening again and get services in place for people. So kind of shout out to them, and also to my staff in, in all of our programs we're still operating, we are still going out and doing investigations, we're still serving IHSS. Oh, well, there's my button, so my sign's up, but if people do need to make a report, the number is 476-2100 to make an APS report, and if you need any more information. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Again, that's 476-2100. Any further public comment, Ryan?
Chair Fennel, that concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Back to the board, Supervisor Madron, and then Supervisor Bone.
Um, yes, I just wanted to comment briefly on the item with Scott Bender being appointed to the Measures E Committee. As you may already know, Scott is already on the committee, and he's an at-large member, and he has had a perfect attendance record, done his homework, has been an incredible member of that committee, and I wanted to move him up to represent District 5, so I apologize, that creeps a hole, creates a hole now for us at an at-large position, so we should all be looking for that. But Scott is just an incredible asset for our community, very engaged, and very happy that he wanted to move up to this position, and glad to help make that happen. So, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron, Supervisor Bone?
Well, I guess if we're, I may read a little bit of the proclamation since Carrie and her crew does such a great job, if you don't mind, since we've all talked about it. So, proclamation, Board of Supervisors, County Humboldt, where as the most recent US Census Bureau estimates that nearly 18% of the population in Humboldt County are approximately 24,000 county residents or 65 years of age or older, and Humboldt County Board of Supervisors actually has 60% of 65 and older. I threw that in there myself. Whereas throughout the United States, it's widespread, affecting all people, and is unrecognized, unreported, and underprosecuted. Whereas Humboldt County Adult Protective Services, APS, receives an average report of 98, receives an average 98 reports of elder and vulnerable abuse a month, which puts in about, you know, just short of 1,200 a year. Elders serve respect and gratitude for their lifelong contributions and the roles they play in their families and community, including the preservation of customs, traditions, and the history of Humboldt. And it just goes on, I'll just say, it goes on to recognize APS for all they do underneath the leadership, Carrie Schrock, who I've been able to deal with on a few occasions, and the follow-up's been great to them. So I really think that's one of the ones we recognize, and I think everybody said the kind words that they did, so I think they appreciate it, and it's another case in point of the fine employees that we have in Humboldt County. So, thank you. I just wanted to read a little part of it because everybody, it's there, so I'll make sure they get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Bone, and thank you for sponsoring that. So with that, I just want to say very briefly, I really appreciate getting the input from a lot of the cannabis associations who've been working very hard to make an impact in Sacramento with regard to the decision on Appalachian origin. Bottom line is, if you think about wine or grapes or anything else, you talk about terroir, you're talking about something that's in the ground, and that's what defines a region or in the air or whatever, but not inside a closed building. So anyway, appreciate their work and appreciate your support of that as well. So with that, Ryan will do a roll call on the consent agenda, please.
Yes, Chair Fennel, we'll start with Supervisor Boss. Supervisor Boss?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fennel?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ryan. And I will bring us on to public comment on items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda, Ryan? I know we're making you go fast forward here.
We have one public commenter on agendas, items not on the, on the agenda.
Thank you, Ryan. Caller?
Hello, Estelle, it's Ken Swawski. I have in front of me Rex, I have a check number 2271 dated 6/9/2020 for Food for People for $100. I talked to Rex on Sunday, a lot of times earlier in the morning, I get ahold of him and have questions on the, on the agenda there and going through that sometimes with Rex, and he did a really good thing out there. So for those of you who would like to contribute, it's still open, you can still do it. Rex got a, Rex got a haircut, I voted $100 toward his mullet that he has there, and my understanding he's raised over $6,000. Thank you, Rex. So I'll be mailing this check for Food for People to 307- So uh I'll be mailing this check for Food for People to three oh seven West Fourteenth Street, Eureka, California, nine five five oh one. That's Food for People, three oh seven West Fourteenth Street, Eureka, California, nine five five oh one. And it says on the front, it says, attention, Rex haircut. So that's how I'm getting across to them. Great cause to donate to and strongly recommend that people do this um to get a chance. So uh I guess there's a challenge out there. I guess everybody can can do something to raise food or take a cause. But thank you, Rex, for bringing this to our attention and uh and thanks for what you're doing there. Uh the other thing I wanted to bring forward was the Humboldt County Taxpayers League is currently working with the City of Trinidad, hopefully to endorse their tax measure. Unfortunately, I've heard from some people, the rumors out there with City of Eureka, is they want to have something kind of like the county did without a sunset. The Taxpayers League feels it's imperative that every so often the voters have a chance without repealing and replacing a tax or putting it on there on a ballot measure to do this. So we will not be endorsing or supporting anybody who's not willing to let the public in a reasonable timeframe have oversight. Uh so that's one thing. There's also rumor they'll be raising the tax. And of course, uh sales tax, if it's raised a half percent or three-quarters percent, is going to have a major impact upon the people in Eureka. So thank you, my opportunity to speak on these two topics. And again, Ben, Rex, um will you, if we pay you more, will you turn that into a man bun and keep it on for a year? Get get the question. Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Kent. Um, okay. Uh any further comments on items not on the agenda?
Uh Chair, that concludes public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you very much, Ryan. So uh that brings us to our next uh item, which is our last item of the day. And this is the McKinleyville Incorporated with the um CAO's office, CAO Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. On February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, your board directed the county administrative office to work with departments to determine whether we are able to estimate the cost of services provided in the McKinleyville Community Services District Boundary Area as a first step to providing information on the potential incorporation of McKinleyville. Incorporation should result in a similar exchange of both revenue and responsibility for service delivery among the county, the proposed city, and other subject agencies. And as a result, serve to minimize the fiscal effects and corporations have on counties. The part, the departments that would be subject to a service delivery exchange through an incorporation process would be the Sheriff's Office, specifically Patrol Services, Planning and Building, and Public Works, specifically Roads, as these services are typically provided by cities. Services provided by Health and Human Services, the Assessor, Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, District Attorney, Public Defender, Correctional Facility, and Probation would all remain responsibilities of the county. Based on feedback received from these three departments, the ability to track their expenses to a specific area is possible. Direct services such as patrol and roads repairs can be tracked. However, tracking administrative support services as well as overhead would need to be estimated. Uh therefore, this is a preliminary first step to track expenses, expense information to later share with the McKinleyville community. And therefore, staff recommends directing the sheriff, public works, and planning and building directors to collect county expenses for the McKinleyville area beginning July one for a one-year period or for a shorter period of time in which a department had deemed appropriate for accurately estimating annual expenses. And that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, CEO Nelson. Um any questions? Obviously, we want to have uh your input, Supervisor Madrona.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate um this item coming back before the board. As you may remember, almost a year and a half ago, I brought this forward and and the board asked me to do some additional homework. And I appreciated that that feedback. So I went out into the community, did that homework. With your packet here today, uh available to yourselves and to the public are letters from the McKinleyville Advisory Committee, where they voted unanimously to support tracking these expenses. Uh there's a letter from the McKinleyville Community Service District. Uh that was a majority vote of three to two. And then there's a letter from the Fire District, uh basically saying that as long as McKinleyville Station stays with the Arcata Station, that they should be fine. Obviously, there are some other issues now with Measure R and stuff, but it doesn't relate to this. And then a lot of letters from the community, as well as a recent poll that was done in the community related to the town center ordinance process that is underway i- in McKinleyville. And there was fifteen comments there from people uh asking why we're not incorporated or when we can look into incorporation and things like that. So I hope that uh answered the questions that the board might have had of me and our community in terms of the local uh support for looking into this issue. It is uh absolutely not a referendum on whether or not we should incorporate or not. That is a decision that will come much farther down the line. But in order to be able to uh help the community wrap themselves around that issue, uh it seemed like the logical first step was to track the expenses in these uh three departments to see what are the estimated uh costs of uh running McKinleyville both at the county level. And then, of course, we have data from the McKinleyville Service District, who does an amazing job uh with sewer waters, street, streetlights, and parks and recreation. And so the revenue part of all this is readily available, but what's been missing is the expense tracking. So with the expense tracking, it is my hope that in a year or so from now, we'll be able to have some community meetings and discuss what does that data tell us uh in regards to whether or not it might be possible to incorporate or not. It seemed like a logical first step and uh appreciate the board's support in this uh if that's the way we go today. It will give us an opportunity to really have that informed discussion at the community level. And then if it looks doable, then the community will be following the LAFCO steps that are laid out in our staff report here that go through a whole process. And just to be clear, uh nor I, I nor the board will decide whether or not McKinleyville's incorporated. Uh it will be based on the factual data on expenses and revenues, uh a detailed feasibility analysis. And ultimately, if that does look feasible, uh then it has to go to a vote of the uh the citizens of of McKinleyville. And those residents will ultimately be the ones that decide whether or not to incorporate or not. So just wanted to share that bit of information and happy to answer any questions that the board might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Madrona. Any discussion at this point before I open it up for public comment? Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bass?
Yeah, this is, I'm finding this really interesting because I got, and I appreciate Supervisor Madrona reaching out, but I got a call from a few Main Street businesses that hadn't been contacted and were kind of, kind of wondering what this did. So I, and they they may have just been a small pocket you happened to miss, but they're quite big. But what I'm trying to figure out, a, an estimate of cost, we haven't incorporated a city in Humboldt County in almost fifty-five years. And in the state of California, it's been a while because of the rules and regulations and the cost sharing that takes place. And so I I worry about, you know, and I'm and I'm sure Supervisor Madrona and 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 the people that want this um are uh looking at this. But I um I'm I'm concerned that they're going to end up like Eureka and even us having to put a lot of taxes on um a half percent or one percent taxes and then it affects the businesses. So that concern um comes out to me. And my other concern is it it keeps saying it's a long way down the road. It probably won't happen. It's not going to, and everything else. I'm trying to figure out how big um McKinleyvilleville Town would be. Does that include Fieldbrook? Does it include Dallas Prairie? Is it gonna? How inclusive are we going to be like Eureka? And then you don't have Pine Hill, Humboldt Hill, Cotton, Myrtle Town, which is close to twelve to fourteen thousand people, I believe. So I I I'm wondering how encompassing it's going to be. And then as for the sheriff, I'm, when they're tracking calls, I know, as you know, I go out on patrol every once in a while and I know we're always getting called to McKinleyville if we're, even if we're doing, you know, the southern end, sometimes there's calls at nights because we have limited and or if there's a gun or anything involved. We get like New Year's night and we have to run to McKinleyville and then there's no, actually no incident, so we run back. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we're going to decipher all these costs. And then my biggest fear is we don't know how far we're in the hole. We don't know if we're going to have to cut employees, salaries, our pay, uh which I would prefer to start with, um or any of those things. And then we're going to go out on this, I'm sure, that um is just speculative anyway. And I, I think it's a great idea. I appreciate you um standing up for the the residents that are asking for this. So talking with people up there, it, I I just hope we're figuring out all the costs and what the um what this does to our deputies on their reports. I don't think it's at all as automatic that, well, I did that. And so I need a few more answers. What McKinleyville will look like, well, West Haven? I mean, where did, where do the lines stop? So especially, we're going to need this for when we go out there and test the waters. And the other thing is, if we're worried about police or roads, um the availability of you putting together, if they're concerned about the the road differentiation or the policing they're getting, they can always do an assessment district without going through the whole thing and actually have that money applied right to that definitive area. So just, just a couple of questions. Not wanting to debate, I just looking for some answers.
Okay, so Supervisor Madrona and then Supervisor Bass.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, those are some good questions. And um I've met with everybody I can. I've written articles in the local paper. I attend all of the MCMAC meetings. I've attended a number of McKinleyville Service District meetings and explain the the process over and over again. Basically, what's been missing for a long time is what are the expenses that the county makes in the McKinleyville area? What is a McKinleyville area? No, it does not include Fieldbrook or Glendale or West Haven or Little River. Uh it generally uh includes all of the McKinleyville Service District area and perhaps a little bit more to the north up by uh Central Avenue at Clam Beach. Those are all questions that get answered by the community down the road. So I'm trying to respect that process. Nobody is suggesting that we should incorporate. That's not what we're doing here. What we're doing is uh tracking the expense information as best as we can. It won't be perfect, but it will be an accurate estimate of what the county currently spends in McKinleyville. As I said before, the revenues are easily accessed, but the expense part of it is not. And so every time this discussion comes up, you get people saying, oh, it's impossible to incorporate, or we absolutely should incorporate, or the county is making money on McKinleyville, or it's losing money on McKinleyville. None of us actually know those facts. And so uh being a fiscal conservative, I thought that the best way to approach this would be to track expenses. And I've had a lot of people in the community have been around for thirty, forty years in McKinleyville who have said, that's exactly what we need. We need to find out this uh financial information and then have that informed discussion in the community about what the boundaries might look like and whether or not to proceed further with that. It's true that often people immediately go to, if we incorporate, that might mean taxes go up. That is not a certainty. Or we need the financial information to be able to determine that. But even if that were true, which is, we're not there yet, um it has been, I think, our observation at the board with Measure Z, Measure O, and other uh types of taxes, that when people are getting something for their money and it's accountable, like Measure Z's uh committee provides that great accountability for the community, that people will often support a tax for things that are going to directly benefit them. But again, nobody knows whether or not we need to raise taxes or not. That is something that is way down the road. And we're not just trying to start down a path that that slides us down into something. It's clearly just the first step to collect that financial information to see if it's possible. And yes, uh revenue neutrality laws that came in about twenty years ago have made it very difficult to incorporate. And so there have been some laws passed. There's a lot of information in the staff report that you can read here that lays out uh some of these details. It talks about how since revenue neutrality, there have been a number of cities that have uh almost gone bankrupt. And so the city then passed, or the county, the state passed laws to give those cities a greater share or a share of the vehicle license fees. And that helped them, six out of seven of those communities are around to this day. Only one of them went bankrupt. And there was actually a bill in the legislature last year to provide a similar share of vehicle license fees to any new city that incorporated. It didn't make its way through the legislature, but Senator McGuire is aware of this issue. He has many unincorporated areas in his uh district that he knows would be benefited from having such a law. So I won't get too far into the weeds here. Just wanted to answer those specific questions from Supervisor Bone. Thank you for those questions, Supervisor.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, last year, when this came forward, I had a lot of questions and I think I brought up a lot of the legislation. You know, the fact that staff believes that they can, you know, track this information, I'm okay with that. You know, I think it makes sense. But I think, you know, and I'm, I know, it sounds like you're making it clear that, you know, this doesn't mean anything's really happening. The county's not on the hook to put, you know, the dollars towards this as if it does move through the process. I mean, there's a whole bunch of other things that are going to come into play. So I'm fine with the tracking. The letter from MCSD that said that they were disappointed that they haven't been part of the discussion with LAFCO. And I was a little bit surprised to see that. So hopefully that is now being um somehow rectified in a way that works. I would suggest Supervisor Bone can give you the names of the people who are contacting him who have not been part of the conversation. That could be helpful. And I guess my biggest concern in moving forward, um not with this piece, but in the eventuality um that you, you know, does move that direction of trying to get incorporated. I'm really curious what's going to happen um through all of this COVID activity and crisis and the dollars. I wouldn't be surprised if we see some cities decide to, you know, become unincorporated anymore and kind of abandon the city status. And I don't know, I haven't heard any rumors to that, but um I'm thinking for the ones that are already on the edge, something like, like what we're going through now could, it'll be interesting. And I, so I, I would say it would be good for you to also, or someone, to follow um what that is looking like in the state to see if there is a trend towards that. So those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Bass. Just uh one of the issues that was brought up by Supervisor Bone um comes to mind for me. I don't know what the answer is. Maybe there's no real reason to dip into it right now. But it is part of the uh initiation of incorporation proceedings to define the boundaries of the area that that you want to 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 be make a city. So I don't know if in this study, we need those boundaries that, you know, the study that's being conducted by staff, or if, or if, because the, that, that has to be just that definition has to come after the um initiation of proceedings. So I'm not sure if if there's any guideline that you, that anyone can provide as to what area we would be studying uh at the county level. Supervisor Bone?
Well, and I, I remember the discussion a year ago um that um the sheriff was going to have a real hard problem. He can take the deputies and how much they cost per hour and and do the decipher that. What we have is we have so many um deputies that come from outside. There's no easy way for him to track. I mean, he can say he has three deputies up there and he's wearing them twenty-four hours a day, plus a lieutenant, plus a station commander. But there's so much more to it that I don't know if he has that ability. And I know Supervisor Madrona said that this was going to be a rough estimate, but it was going to be accurate, I think. And it, it's hard to have both. And if, I, I don't know how accurate it really has to be, but I do believe the people that are, that are on Main Street and then you probably know, you've contacted them all, maybe they forgot. But um they, uh, uh, wondering about that. I was talking to you, I was looking at Les's heart. I noticed some of the, one of the letters, the, the gentleman's no longer with us anymore. And I don't know if that's an updated MCSD letter. It looks a lot like the one, I, I don't know where they're sitting. And like you said, it was a three-two vote. And I, and I, and I'm wondering, is MCSD going to become part of the city services? And I know it's a long way down the road, but a long way starts with a step. And if it's, if we're stepping in the right, I, I want to be stepping in the right direction because, as you know, one inch off at the beginning is fourteen feet off at the end. So I, hopefully, we're all online with this and everybody is. So I, hopefully we're all online with this and everybody is, we can be accurate. And again, I'm, I'm getting calls, people wanting to know what, who will be in town and who won't be in town. Because I mean, as you're full aware and you're, you've been doing this so long. McKinneyville, when it first started and, you know, when it first got busy and Ernie Pearson built the mall there, because that was for the people that didn't want to live in Urinca Arcata because it was a city. So they wanted to move out of the country. So now they're enveloping. So I, I, I'd like some more of that. So we're on the right track and narrow. And then I, I do worry about the cost because we have no idea what we've got coming. I mean, that's what scares me probably more than anything financially, where this county is going to be. So.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some, again, some great questions by Supervisor Bass and Bone. I'll try and answer all of those. As far as the area of study, it would be for now McKinneyville Community Service District service area, which is mapped out and includes what all of us would generally consider to be McKinneyville. It does not include Fieldbrook, Glendale, Little River, Cornell, West Haven. It's in the service area, which is generally speaking, the area we all know of as McKinneyville. The sheriff, I, I actually have emails. I had included him for the packet, but they, they were not included at any rate. So I have email responses from each of the three department heads. And what Sheriff Hansel told me was that he could add a line item to the deputy's time cards so that when they're working in the McKinneyville service area, they would put those hours on that line on their time card. He said it would be that simple. With roads, roads are already tracked by road mile. And so Tom Mattson said that it would be quite easy to simply query their database and come up with the data for that McKinneyville service area. Planning can do it for projects, a little more difficult with the overhead, the admin. And that's why we talked about coming up with an accurate estimate, not a rough estimate, but an accurate estimate. And I believe those words go together, where you do your best diligence to provide the best information you can. And John Ford said that they would be able to do that. So I've tried to do my due diligence there with the department heads and that hopefully explains the service area. Supervisor Bone, if you have some names of people that had contacted you, they didn't contact me. I know you must have a good relationship with them. And if you could forward those to me, I'd be happy to follow up with those individuals. In regards to the letter from the service district recently, in regards to the LAFCO meeting, first let me say that the letter from, from the CSD board, where they voted three to two to support tracking expenses, is the current Board of Directors. George Wheeler was one of the board members, but he was not one of the ones that voted on that letter. He had already resigned from the Service District Board due to health concerns and bless his soul, he's passed. But so that hopefully answers that. As far as the LAFCO thing, what happened was there was a staff report from a LAFCO staff person, based on a conversation that Amy, myself and that staff person had. They were simply giving LAFCO an update. And the Community Service District was concerned, as was I, that neither of us had been informed that there was going to be any kind of a reporting to the board where we might engage in a conversation about this issue. It was nobody's fault. It wasn't like it was a big agenda item. It was just a staff report. And since that happened, I have talked with the Service District Board and apologized for any error I might have made in not communicating with them regularly and offered to increase that communication process in both directions. So I think we've, we've taken care of that. I appreciated the Service District's letter, making sure that they're kept in the loop. And the other question was, so what happens to the Service District after the city is formed? There are so many options and all of those will be community discussions based on factual financial data. Some cities continue to maintain a service district within a city. Service districts can even take on planning authority, but they don't have the ability to tax for that to be able to run that kind of a department. Whereas a county can do taxes that a service district cannot, or raise funds in other ways that a service district cannot. Again, I'm not suggesting that creating a city would raise taxes, but that is often part of the discussion. So what happens to the Service District will be a very important conversation with the district itself and the community. So I hope that answered some of the questions that were brought up by both supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. If there's no further discussion, I'll open this up to public comment. And I do know that McKinleyville Community Services District did have a representative who wanted to speak today. I don't know if you're there. And if that's the case, I'd like to welcome, I believe it was Dennis Mayo was going to speak. I don't know if he's on there yet. Ryan, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, it looks like we have four public commenters currently.
Maybe you could have Mr. Mayo or, or whoever is representing the district identify themselves and we'll put them, go first, please.
Sure, I can just start unmuting people and we can find the representative.
Okay, so we'll start. I can, I think the first one is Kent, that the first one I see is Kent. So if you could go on from there, what, nine, seven, six, four?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is not, are you representing the McKinleyville Community Services District?
Yes, I'm a Board Director for like twenty years.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome and love to hear for your thoughts. I think you've got your, I think it sounds like you've got your computer or your TV on. If you could shut those off so we don't have an echo, please.
John, you need to turn off your TV.
Okay, thank you.
Turn off the computer, turn off the TV, just use your phone. Ah, the joys of technology.
Are you ready to speak now?
Is this a reference to me?
I believe so. Is this John?
Yes, this is John.
Okay, great. John, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It's John Corbett, eighteen oh one Ocean Drive, McKinleyville, California. And my comments are, should be treated as individual comments of a board member rather than the district. And I want to say, if anything I say contradicts one of our written letters, the written letters should be held determinative. I wanted to make three points, which I'm going to state at the first in case I run out of time. But of course McKinleyville should be a necessary priority is the first one. The second is that our relationship with the county is the best in thirty years. I hesitate to say that because I'm sure I'll get an email of every error or concern that someone has. But at the general level, I will stick with that comment. And then lastly, the need for some financial information. I'll start with the last item first. This has been grinding its wheels around about thirty years in McKinleyville, sharpened a little bit twenty years ago. And so it's really an issue where we need to get as much and as accurate information as we can. I thought Supervisor Bond was very astute that we may need to adjust the figures after the coronavirus. But nevertheless, you got to start somewhere and for twenty years we haven't. My concerns are twofold. First one, after the state legislature changed the method of incorporation, allegedly to make it easier and clearer, hardly anyone has been able to meet the test. And those that have met the test have almost all suffered severe financial consequences and many bailed out by the state legislature. So as a consequence, it's very, very important that we understand the finances. My greatest concern is that if we don't, eventually it's going to be decided on political orientation rather than the finances. And by the way, I want to say I am neutral on whether we ought to incorporate or not, because I want to see the finances. And so I think it's just time that we resolve this issue by getting the best information we can and appreciate your consideration of it. My second point is going back to the relationship with the county. I think county planning directors should be commended for his incredible work and adjustments to a different format on the community planning effort. And similarly with public works, we've gotten more input on our streets and other items. And believe it or not, we'll have twenty, thirty people show up on an item to discuss the design of our street, which is a good, healthy sign, and also the sheriff. And so I just want to say, in the thirty years I've been around, it is the best relationship that doesn't happen by accident. I appreciate your approval and need that you've allowed it. And so I hope the county, the Board of Supervisors pass themselves on the shoulder and I hope the department heads are given good kudos. And of course, the sheriff's in independently elected office, but he's done a great job as well. And so I think that's the basic that I have. It's time to get some information. We want a rational decision and that requires the best information we can have. And we haven't had enough for twenty years and it's gone back and forth and back and forth. To Supervisor Bond, I admit, I did not contact the business community because after twenty years, I'm tired and do not know when this issue will go forward. And so I was waiting for it to have some life. And I can assure you that before the next steps are taken, they will be integrated at every step as well as the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Line, and your various McMac and community groups. But it's been such a long time, it's hard to know when to contact people that it's actually going to happen. Anyway, thank you for considering it. MCSD is a necessary party and I want the county to be thanked for how well you've adjusted to allowing us to participate in county functions as well as working with the district, which is the only duly elected entity. And you've done a great job. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, John. Is there any other representative of the MCSD that'd like to speak before I go to other callers? Hello caller.
Twenty twenty-five? Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Maya Conrad, a resident of McKinleyville. And I want to echo some of what Mr. Corbett said. I think it's high time for McKinleyville to gain more information and data. And I, I've heard for years this idea of incorporation and it's impossible. But how can we truly know anything without more information? So I want to support Supervisor Madron in this quest for just gaining more information so that we can make decisions appropriate to McKinleyville. I think that's all I have to say. I thank you for your time and thank you for all of your support of McKinleyville especially. And I will also echo the county planning staff has been absolutely tremendous to work with for the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee as we wind our way through the town center process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maya. Do we have another caller?
Yeah, hi, this is Greg Arcini, General Manager for McKinleyville Community Services District. And, and I think that, that John Corbett spoke to most of the points that I was going to bring up. I just think that it's imperative that McKinleyville Community Services District is involved at all levels of these conversations. I encourage the, the fact finding on the, on the true, on the true financial impact that McKinleyville Communities, the McKinleyville area is having on the county, so that those, so those things can be considered. But, but as with the difficulties that we've had in, in the, in some of, in the communications, we weren't notified that this was even going to be an agenda item until after the agenda was already posted. So I think that it would, it would be good for McKinleyville Community Services District to, to, to be higher up on the list of notifications when, when discussions of the incorporation of McKinleyville are, are going to be included or are being conducted by the County of Humboldt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Any other comments?
Dennis Mayo here.
Okay, welcome Dennis.
Good deal. So I guess I got in on the end of the queue, but that's, that's fine. These are all very interesting deals, all of these meetings like this. So I don't want to get far astray into pro or con on incorporation. There'll be a time that, you know, we could go ad nauseam about that. But I, but I do want to provide you with some factual information. And one of the first things is, is that as a district, when this gets to a certain point, we won't be able to participate a lot because we won't be able to give a yay or an a on a political issue. So what we want to do is make sure that you understand our value and, and things. McKinleyville Community Service District is not only a strategic partner with the county, but we're an important part of your asset portfolio. It's a big deal. We're great partners. Our relationship and the form of government that we have is functioning very well. And in the last fifteen years or so, we've, we've increased our important relationship with you, the county, the state. We've helped direct new federal language in policy and bills that have become fruitful for our ratepayers, for you and the county as well. And that's because of the yeoman work that the district does. I, I would say that MCSD is one of the largest demographics in the fifth district. We may not be the largest, but, but it's an important, it, it's, it's an important demographic to keep at the front of any issue. And, and especially anything that impacts our ability to provide the services that we're mandated to provide. So that, you know, that's, that's important stuff. As far as the, a couple of the points brought up about not being able to take over planning or latent planning, with SB thirty-five's passage some years ago, it's allowed special districts to be able to perform services like planning if the ratepayers so choose and are willing to tax themselves to do it. So when we're looking in the terms of taxing down the line for things, most of the, most of the language and the feelings that I hear about in this community revolve more around planning. I think anybody today would be foolish to try to develop their own police department when we've got the outstanding Humboldt County Sheriff's Department working for us. So many cities, many cities want to get out of being cities, but they, but there's no way they can do it with their workman comp and their purse contributions to keep going. Anyway, I'm getting a little off, but my main point here is that we're in a kind of a tight, you guys are in a tight. I believe you're at least six million dollars in the hole from, from our COVID restrictions, our, our Measure Z losses, our tax revenue losses. It could end up being a lot more guys. At our services district, our parking wreck is hurting. We're, we're really, really hurting. And the time, the time and energy and money that we have to focus on things need to be honed down. We've got projects that need to be worked on. We've got legislation relative to the drought. And believe me, we want good information. More, more information, the best information is, is, is what everybody needs. But I understand that the Board of Supervisors has outdated software. I understand that the board of supervisors has outdated software for these things and trying to figure out the right way to get software. I think maybe our time and energy should be spent on getting our department software stuff upgraded so that this stuff doesn't get tracked for just for McKinleyville. It gets tracked for everywhere. And that would be very, very helpful to us. Right now, I just don't see it being relevant. It's not a pressing issue at all. This is not a pressing issue. This is a wish list, and I'm all for the public getting the info and the district getting the info and the board. But I think right now we need to focus on stuff that's more germane to us. Plus, I don't think we're going to get accurate information this year. I think we need to wait till, and I don't mean we should wait, I'm just saying that as this moves forward, you have to realize we're not going to get the kind of information right now that's going to be correct. So anyway, those are some comments from me as a, as a board member, not as an individual. Later, if we have the discussion about incorporation, I'll have many individual things to say. But I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to cover for you how special this district is and how important our work is and how important our relationship with the county is, and that benefits the public.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate that. Any further public comment on this item?
Still, Ken Swawski, I've always wanted those numbers to know whether McKinleyville out there is a cash cow or a money pit. That is something I think that should be reflected. I believe Supervisor Madrone bought Forward Measure R and the Fire out there. If it proves that McKinleyville is, as I believe most likely will be, a cash cow, I definitely could understand any kind of monies that are brought in in addition to what they spend out there, being possibly designated from Measure Z expenses or some other general fund stores to make up any shortfalls for the fire services district out there. It's one heck of a, it's a, the people out there assess themselves. And in my opinion, it's totally appropriate that the money to make that. I'm not going to ever support probably having three fire stations open, but the one in McKinleyville needs to stay open at all times. Quit playing what I've heard do is Russian roulette with the public on that particular topic and make sure the county funds that one to stay open and the primary one in Arcade also. Those, those things, you know, should be taken care of, and I think the study will show whether there's excess money coming in. I'm always strongly supporting money being spent where it comes from. And I understand we have to spread a little bit around, but that little bit should be minimized. So I'm really looking forward to these numbers, whether it moves forward beyond that or not. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ken. Any further comment on this item?
Your final that concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Appreciate that. Go to Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, I just, I support the continuing of getting the information related to this question. I don't see any of our local cities asking to dissolve, which tells me that they, you know, that the communities that have that incorporation enjoy the benefits of that and also understand some of the responsibilities and burdens that come with that too. And I think that's reasonable. This is, for me, a trajectory, kind of a long-term question and a long-term effort, if that's the direction that things go, but you don't need, you need the data to do that. And so I would, you know, ask myself if McKinleyville had incorporated twenty years ago, would they be now asking to unincorporate? And I would say probably not, would be my guess. I hear some conversation about some communities talking about that. I'm going to say that those are very rare incidences relative to the number of communities that are incorporated. And so, like so many other things, when we talked about doing like our energy aggregation for as a community, and when other communities are looking around and they look to the successes of other communities in that, then we can look at the successes of incorporation in other places. I would say that the revenue neutrality laws that have been adopted and modified have a certain element of discretion in them. There's politics in that in terms of how, what's decided in terms of, you know, the revenues in that, what that neutrality really means. And that would, that would be a process that our board supervisors would have to have. I in general, generally want to, I'm not territorial in that regard. I think that, you know, whatever we can do that's best for the most citizens is the direction we should probably be looking at, not necessarily for the institution of the county, but really what's best for the citizens. And so I think that's, that's something we should be thinking about. So I'm generally in favor of the direction that's being proposed by Supervisor Madrone right now, and so those are my comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Any Supervisor Madrone?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And with that, it seems like we've had a robust discussion. I'm certainly available to answer any other questions that might come up. But I would move that we receive the staff report and that we direct the sheriff, planning and building director, and the public works director to collect county expenses for the McKinleyville area beginning July first for a one-year period or for a shorter period of time in which a department head deems appropriate for accurately estimating annual expenses.
And I'll second the motion, but I do have a question for Supervisor Madrone, which in that, isn't that something that we have discussed already happening? Isn't that already, has that not been occurring? Or is this really the first time we're getting to that request with regards to information collection?
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Madrone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Mike, I brought this forward a year and a couple of months ago, but it didn't pass then. So no, this information has not been being collected. This direction from the board would provide staff the first direction to actually do that. And I've had a lot of conversation with the department heads and with our CAO about this in that it was mentioned, well, this isn't going to be a normal year. Absolutely not. We know that with COVID. And so what the department heads have agreed to do is not only track the expenses and come up with that accurate accounting and estimate, but also to provide the county with some feedback. Was this in their mind a normal year of expenses? Was this a low year? Was this a high year? So they're going to provide us with some sort of a, you know, thermometer or a scale to try and help us understand where this coming year's data might fit in a larger picture of data collection. So we did talk about that because that's important, you know, it's a point in time count. I mean, as Director Mayo said, you know, ultimately it'd be great to have software to be able to track these kinds of things throughout the unincorporated parts of the county. I'm sure that Garvaville and Redway and Venville areas and others may very well like to know similar data. But that's not what we're here to discuss today, and I think that may be something that would be good in the future. But right now, we're just trying to get something for what is probably the second largest non-city or city in Humboldt County. I hope that answers your question, Supervisor Wilson.
It does answer my question. Thanks for the reminder of the outcome of that discussion that we had before. I do understand that we are in a unique point in time with regards to the COVID situation. And I do, I do think that our staff would have the ability to adjust for that. And since we're not looking at revenues per se, we're really looking at expenses. That's a sort of a different scenario. So I still, I'm still supportive of of this effort. I think, you know, we're going to, there will be a world beyond COVID. It's not going to be COVID forever in this context. And so where we might choose to not do certain things because maybe they have such large burdens to them and could pose as distractions. I don't, I'm not clear that this is one of those things that we need to veer away from because of the existing situation. I don't, I don't see this, at least not what's been presented to me as, you know, a huge burden from that perspective. And it's a year from now is when we would be expecting some of that data to be being really put together. So if there are, you know, extraordinary circumstances where a year from now, things can't quite come together as expected, then we'll get a report about that and make adjustments.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I just, and I appreciate Supervisor Madrone telling us what all the department heads have told them. I'd feel really more comfortable with them telling them that this is easy to do. This is a chip shot. This will be easy. I'm hearing, I tend to hear a different story that this is a separate line item on a time card for a deputy. This all takes time. So that has me concerned. And then, you know, the big picture is, and I, Supervisor Wilson brought this up to me when he was first on the board on a discussion we were having. You know, a lot of the money being spent in McKinleyville is being spent by West Haven, Glendale, Philbrook, especially Philbrook, Glendale and everything else. And they won't get a decision on this, but just so they know when their tax dollars, if it did incorporate, their tax dollars aren't going to go back out to fix their roads, the unincorporated areas, kind of like what we do here with Costco with, you know, I think over sixty-some-odd percent of the cars are from outside the city limits, but they get the benefits except for Measure Z of the tax dollar. So these are, these are things we all have to weigh. But I was just wondering, and maybe I don't want to kick the can down the road. I would love to have the department heads that are having to do this come in and tell us upfront that, hell, this is going to be easier than heck in a year. We're going to have almost accurate, we're going to have, we're going to make estimates that are going to be really accurate. And I'm just wondering if that's, or do we just roll forward with it and hope for the best? That's, that's kind of where I'm looking at. I think that's why we had a problem a few months ago. That's why we had a problem a year ago with it. I just, I just don't know if we have the full, you know, maybe when we change our payroll to ADP and maybe they'll have a way to do this a little bit better than everything else. But I, I don't think it's a chip shot. I don't think it's that easy. And saying it's that easy doesn't make it easy. So and maybe the department heads tell you, maybe you, I didn't know, you said you talked to Senator McGuire about this. Did he think it was a great idea, bad idea, or did you just mention it to him and throw it out there? So I'm just, I noticed the name dropping. So was he willing to help finance it to get McKinleyville City where they wanted to be? So these, just, I just would like to hear from them, and if we can't, you guys, still go.
So Supervisor Bone, Director Ford and Director Mattson are on the call. So I'm actually going to ask if Director Ford, can you give us, give us an answer to those questions from Supervisor Bone?
Sure. And I think Supervisor Madrone did reflect correctly what I had told him, which is in terms of tracking the permit costs and income from that, we can track that through Excela. We are going to need to modify the software just to probably put a box in there to show that it's in McKinleyville. So then what we would do is run a report at the end of the year showing all projects that have come in as part of McKinleyville. And that will give us, here's how much we spent on it, here's how much we received on it. The thing that will be very difficult for us to get, and I've shared this with Supervisor Madrone, is the administrative costs associated with that. I mean, we can, you know, look and assess some kind of percentage of the overall cost of the department and try to discern what McKinleyville's portion of that is. But there's administrative costs, there's the overhead costs that, that aren't as easily tracked. Those are going to have to be very rough estimates.
Thank you, Director Ford. Director Mattson, do you have anything you can add to that in terms of clarification?
You know, our hardest issue is going to be making sure that our employees put down the right project number every time they work in McKinleyville. For roads, we already do it through roads and post miles primarily. We do have an approved overhead factor that's worked out with the state of California. So we, we have a number that we can use for overhead. The important thing is for parks and land use, we currently don't track to that detail. So just like with COVID, we will give everybody a project number. If you're working in that, you put that project number down. We have a cost accounting system, and we just at the end of the year, we'll run that number, and it should give us a pretty accurate idea of what we're expending in the community.
Thank you, Director Mattson. And as I mentioned earlier, the sheriff had to leave for another meeting. But at least we have that assessment of those two departments. Thank you very much, Directors. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I appreciate those. For me, again, I'm not going to be second guessing, you know, our one Supervisor Madrone and his conversations about this. But I will say it's, we do, in this time, it's about managing expectations. And I think getting started on this is not a bad thing, and then really figuring out what, you know, a year from now, where we're at. And we hear the word accuracy and accurate, and in statistics, there's a big difference between accuracy and precision. We're not asking for precision. Accuracy just means like, do you, is, are you in the right direction? Do you have, is the picture, you know, you know, are you, are you on the target board or within the framework of getting, moving in that right direction? Precision is like getting it into that, you know, every time, it's always in the same place. I think that we're going to get some accurate numbers in, in, in sort of guessing the space because a lot of what we do is that. And I think that information will be valuable no matter what. And again, even the process of getting us into that place may, there may be, there may be other things that we want to track in the future relative to other communities. And this, this may help us create that protocol to get there. So it's really, it seems to be an exercise in data gathering in the, in the current context, and I appreciate that. And I'm willing to take a chance and see what happens on the other end. Again, I think we need to manage our expectations, and hopefully we're pleasantly surprised with the value of that data on the other end. And if not, we can assess in a year from now and figure that out. But getting down that road, I think, is important. And so I'll stick with my support, and I'm ready to move on to something else now.
You mean to end the meeting? Okay. Supervisor Bone?
I I would just love to know how much this is going to cost. I've heard, and then I've heard that accurate isn't accurate. Accurate's, precise is accurate. Accurate's a bigger picture. And then maybe your hand grenade's real close. I don't know. But I don't have, there's no cost on here. There is no cost. And I've heard it's going to be a lot. I've heard it's going to be a little. I've heard it's going to be hard. I've heard it's, now it's going to be easy. It's, the data's a long way. So I'm voting no just because it's an open-ended item. And right now, I don't know if our county can vote for something that doesn't have, if you want to put a cap not to spend more than twenty-five thousand dollars because it's accurate data that won't be so accurate, but it'll be kind of accurate, is we get that and it'll be, it'll be great for everyone else. It's fine. But I mean, it's just, there's so many layers to this, and I just, I was just, I'm just trying to figure out the costs. And if there's no cap and we keep asking for more and keep asking for more and stretch it out over a year, I don't think we're doing a, I don't think we're doing justice because we don't vote on very much with, it doesn't have a cap on it for money. And right now, with what we're going to be asking of our employees, what we've already been asking of our constituents, and the way things are looking, I don't know if we can really do anything open-ended like this. So I support it in theory. I understand that Supervisor Madrone's getting requests from people that would like to manage their, their own, I think everybody would like to manage their own neighborhoods. But we're not there yet. So if it's going to be open-ended, I'm going to have a tough time with it. It's not that I don't support the theory.
So Supervisor Bass was next, but if you wouldn't mind Supervisor Bass, I note that Sheriff Hansel has joined us, and I'd like And I'd like, if the sheriff could give us your feedback on, on how easy this process would be for you. Thank you Sheriff.
Yeah, sorry about that. Just been in a couple of other meetings. So, when, when it comes to just looking at the costs, obviously there's costs with that shared costs. You know, there's things that we do for, you know, county and general county business and those kind of things. But when, if McKinneville incorporates some of those things, you know, with personnel, we do have some set costs with personnel. You know, secretary, you know, eight to 10 deputies, four different sergeants. You know, there's, there's things that we can, we can, we can look at. But in reality, it's like, you know, for a, a city to incorporate and to, to have its own police department, you can look at what we charge our, our contract cities right now for deputies. And, and what McKinneville would have to, you know, look at charging if they would incorporate, what we would do there. And, you know, so just rough estimates, it's going to be over $2 million based upon current levels right now. And, but if you're looking at a true police department, all the costs of a true police department, Arcata and McKinneville, about the same size, look at their budget and how much they spend. And that would be a realistic point of view for the, the, this, the CST to look at to see if they could afford, afford that based upon what their revenues would be.
Thank you Sheriff. Supervisor Bash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'm hearing, we're talking about costs and we're here, and we're talking about costs. You know, we're talking about, we're trying to find out and track the costs, right? In the long term for a year. Sounds to me like Supervisor Bone was actually concerned about the cost of actually tracking the costs. So, okay, those are two different things. He suggested a cap. So, perhaps Supervisor Madron would be willing to put towards a motion that would actually have a cap to how much we spend in tracking those costs. And if it gets close to hitting a certain number, then we come back and reconsider. I mean, if we want to move on so that we have more of a united front moving forward in this item. Or not. I, I, I'm, I'm supportive of it. Though I do understand Supervisor Bone's concern of what is the cost of actually tracking the costs? But I don't know if we can have that figured out upfront. So, perhaps a rain.
I'm going to jump in here right now because, again, being extremely conscious of, of budget shortfalls in the COVID era, I would not want to say $25,000. I'd want to hear from each one of the directors to think, i- is there an extra cost associated with it? Because what I'm hearing is they're putting in a data point and that will be quote unquote harvested at the end of the year. And I, I can't imagine that's going to cost $25,000 even with all three departments. So, that's, that's what I'd like to know from each department. If you wouldn't mind, unless to Director Ford, can you give us any estimate of the cost of mine incur?
I, I, there will be some cost. But whether or not I would really, my sense is that that's within our normal cost of, of operating. Well, that doesn't come across right, come across quite right. There will be a minor amount of cost associated with doing this. But it's really a matter of making an amendment to our permit processing program and then having the plan checkers, the inspectors, the permit specialists and the planners check that box every time they work on a project. If it's McKinneville. That's the additional time and effort that's really involved here. And then making an assessment of our overall permit load and, and the percentage that McKinneville has. So, you know, I would say that's within maybe $1,000 or $2,000 of additional time and cost.
Thank you Director Ford. That's very helpful. Director Mattson?
Yeah, I, I agree with John. We track projects and project numbers all over the place for all the different funds that we use. This is just one more project tracking and it'll take, you know, a few hours to run the report at the end of the year. So, I, I, again, I see it as pretty minor. It's something we do as a normal running routine. It's just another project to track.
Thank you. So, Director Ford said he estimated it could be $1,000 to $2,000. You care to give us an estimate?
I, I would agree with that. It's a few seconds at the end of the day for each employee that works there to write it on their time card. And it's data entry that we already do. It's just one more project.
Thank you. Sheriff Hansel?
Well, when it comes down to it, I mean, it's, we're, we're there. Obviously, we can track our, our deputies' time, those kind of things. But, you know, what we don't do is we don't track the amount of executive time that we dedicate to managing the people. Because we touch things every day in McKinneville. And McKinneville, we call it the North Area Command. So, I have a lieutenant, I have a captain, I have an undersheriff myself, plus our, our CFO that, that are constantly, you know, working with some of those things here when, when it comes to McKinneville. So, it is, it is going to be impossible to track all of those administrative type costs. And I guess it's just, you know, because we, we, we don't break our, our, and it's impossible for as timekeeping goes, you know, to, to break our time down and how much we're dedicated to administratively following things in, in McKinneville. So, and McKinneville itself, because our North Area Command is essentially, you know, everything north of, of Mad River. So, so anyway, it is one of those things that's, that's difficult to, to, to track. But, you know, the, the, the cost of deputy sheriffs and, and the sergeants and the people that are physically there, like I said, we can, we can do that and offer that number with minimal cost.
Thank you Sheriff. Again, I'll put to you, Director Ford estimated between $1,000 and $2,000 for his department to just put this thing in, in motion. Any, can you give us a ballpark figure at all? I mean, if we were to say for a maximum of $5,000 for instance?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess. Yeah, well, I, I don't think, I don't think it's the cost is a lot to run those kind of reports. But as far as accuracy goes, I just don't think it's going to be, you know, the true cost of what, you know, what we do, do for McKinneville itself. So, but we can give a ballpark and it would be, yeah, less than, less than a couple thousand easy.
Thank you. Okay. Director, Supervisor Madron and then Supervisor Bone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and thank you Sheriff Hansel, Director Ford and Director Mattson. I appreciated that feedback. And, and you had earlier responded to me by email and I had included these in this package. But others thought that it wasn't necessary. But I do have those in writing. If Supervisor Bone would like me to forward those to them, I wasn't just speaking off the cuff. I had conversations with all three of these department heads. And, you know, I do understand the difficulty of the overhead and the admin part. But like any business, one tends to approach that from a percentage basis where let's say that out of all the calls, the county sheriff's doing 50% of them are in McKinneville. Then one approach is you say, well, 50% of our overhead and admin is associated with McKinneville. So, that's how businesses normally do that. Let's say you have a department store and you got a shoe department, you've got a clothing department, you've got this and that. That's how people break admin and overhead out in all kinds of businesses. They make that estimate based on the overall, you know, the percentage of one department versus the overall piece of the picture. So, I do appreciate the, the, the efforts that have to be put into trying to, to track it that way. And I will also just say that in the staff report in front of us all, at the very end, under financial impact, there's always a statement there about the financial impact to the county on anything that comes before us. And on this particular item, it says, quote, "Staff time to collect data on county expenses for the McKinneville area have been incorporated into the proposed budget for 2020, 2021." And as has been stated here, we're talking about a few thousand dollars. You know, maybe up to $5,000 for all three departments. So, appreciate that discussion and data. Thank you department heads for helping to answer those questions. So, unless there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation. Mike, I've been questioned and answered. I just wanted to make sure financially that I look forward to McKinneville City.
Sorry, you guys. Hold on one second. I'm having an issue here with audio. Let's do.
There's already been a motion in a second.
Yeah.
I don't know what's happening here. Give me one. I tried changing my, my audio.
Supervisor, there, there was a motion in a second for staff recommendations.
Take the vote then.
Can't hear you still.
Take the vote Ryan. We'll go, we'll go visual.
Supervisor Fennel, can, can you hear us or? Are we good to take the vote?
Yeah.
We good?
Might as well have to call the vice chair in.
Here I am. Are we, we're good to take the vote?
I'm good to take a vote.
Get it from the mud flat guy then.
There you go.
All right, so.
All those in favor signify by saying aye in order of roll call. And Estelle can raise her hands when it gets to her.
Sure. So Supervisor Bone? Is it yes? Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fennel, if you could give us a thumbs up?
I remember that thumbs up. See if she gets it. Thumbs up to Estelle.
Well, it's four to, four to zero, I guess.
Yeah, it will be four. Four oh. And one recusal absent.
Technical difficulty.
Technical difficulty.
Check with her what her vote is when she's back online.
I can, I can. Yeah.
I don't know what happened.
There we are.
I don't know what's been going on all of this time. You guys have been giving me hand signals and all sorts of stuff. But here we go. We voted. What happened? Why was gone?
So, we're, we're currently in the middle of the vote. It, it's currently four oh and we just need your vote to make it unanimous five oh. For staff.
You got my vote.
So, it passes, passes five oh.
Thanks you guys. I really, really apologize for that. I was trying to switch my, because my, anyhow, my AirPods went out. Appreciate it so much. So, thank you for, to everybody for your participation in the meeting today, for your patience with me as I went through this last little glitch. And then we'll be going on virtual meetings for, for seeable future. Our next meeting will be next Monday, which is actually a meeting at 1:30 and at 5:30 on the budget. And then we'll have a meeting again next Tuesday. So, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.